I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
In the place to be.
Great. Well, thank you all so much tonight for joining us. Tonight, the City Council will be covering a few things. We did have a last-minute addition of an administrative session that happened tonight at 6:30. So that is the one change to the agenda for tonight. We will have our regular legislative update as well as public comments on voting items. The voting items for tonight will be the first reading ordinance approving the FY23 Budget Amendment Number Five. And then the council will vote to convene as a storm water management board, and we will have the first reading ordinance approving the FY23 Storm Water Management Budget Amendment, followed by presentations on the storm water management program, the overview, as well as a work session on the replacement roof for the recreation center. In terms of upcoming agendas... Let's see if my tech will work with me. All right, perfect. I made that too large. So on Wednesday, February the 15th, the council will be meeting on Wednesday at 7:30. We'll have our legislative update as well as voting sessions, the second reading approving the FY23 Budget Amendment. The council will also vote on the second reading ordinance approving the FY23 Storm Water Budget Amendment Number Two, as well as a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for the recreation center roof replacement. We'll have work session on the appointments of boards and committees. We are also tentatively scheduled to discuss the city attorney contract amendment and fees. Just as a reminder, Monday, February the 20th is President's Day, and city offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday for the holiday. As a reminder, our police department is always available to respond to emergencies. On Wednesday, February the 22nd, the City Council will have its regular meeting at 7:30 p.m. We will have a proclamation for Lee Jordan Day, a legislative update, as well as traffic calming requests. The Second Avenue Speed Bump will be a public hearing that night for that speed bump, as well as a presentation from our Board of Elections regarding the 2022 election report and debrief, as well as voting sessions on resolutions providing for appointments of boards and committees, as well as a single, tentatively, a single reading ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the city attorney's contract. The work session will be traffic calming on Second Avenue Speed Bump, as well as an overview of the process for traffic calming requests and sidewalk requests. And that takes us into the month of March. So with that... Just make sure that I can get back to my page. All right. So with that, I will turn things over. Do we have Ann available for our legislative update? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you so... Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ann, for joining us to run through the legislative updates.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. Wanted to share a little bit of some of the recent activities going on. First, I did get word from the District 20 team that the request for funding for the library is moving forward in the process. We won't know until the end of March whether or not it gets funded and how much, but it's all in progress moving forward. So that's good news. Wanted to acknowledge a fabulous job that Councilmember Small did in testifying yesterday in the House Environment and Transportation Committee in support of the bill related to unlawful restrictive covenants. He was the only person testifying along with the sponsor of the bill, and I think did a great job there. There were a lot of questions about how to make the bill maybe broader and do more to eliminate illegal language restricting property. So it was, I thought, a pretty healthy discussion. And then Matthew Ling with the Board of Elections also testified on the bill related to the ranked choice voting and the upcoming contract bid for the systems, the equipment that municipalities and others rent to make sure that they can do the ballots efficiently. So those are just the major things. There are... We just hit the Senate Bill Introduction Deadline, and there were something like four or 500 bills that got introduced Monday and Tuesday. It's a lot. And the House deadline is coming up this Friday. So we will see the overwhelming majority of bills introduced by Monday of next week. And then just one other thing. This was something that, again, another member of the District 20 team alerted us to. In the... There's a pretty significant piece of legislation related to cannabis. So with the passage of the ballot measure back in November, there are a number of things that automatically will be going into effect based on legislation that passed last year contingent on the ballot, ballot measure being approved. But there's a lot of other stuff that needs to happen to really create the structure around how cannabis will be legally sold and regulated and taxed in the state. There are also several funds that have been set up, and there is a line item in the bill that identifies a percentage of the revenue that comes from cannabis sales will come to municipalities. So we'll be digging a little deeper into that and certainly making sure that that is, at a minimum, protected in the legislation as it continues to move forward. None of this is going to be realized for some time in terms of the whole structure being set up and revenue coming in, but perhaps in a year's time, we may be seeing some of that. We'll see, you know, how that pans out with how they work on the legislation. And then I do believe that the bill chart was shared with the council members, and so if anybody has any questions on any of the other issues, please let me know.
Great. Councilmember Small.
Hi, Ann. Thank you. I don't know whether or not the... I'll get to that part in a second. I'm not 100% sure that the committee chair was real happy with me, but that's neither nor there. I wanted to ask you about the concept of the wheat and the chaff associated with the Senate bills. Like, if we presuppose that, like, 500 of them went in, and there's some turnover at the governor's office, and there's some turnover in the leadership, like, do you have any sense of how many of them are wheat and how many of them are chaff? And the number, just like a rough number, or no? It's okay if you don't. I'm just curious.
I don't. I mean, we give, like, very broad figures on that. You know, like, in a given year... I don't know that we've updated it lately, like, I think since COVID, but, you know, we usually had said there were about 2,500 bills introduced each year and about 600 or so pass. Haven't done the math, but it's, you know, generally that kind of proportion.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I had sent you... I read the bill chart last week. Sounds like it's already up to date. But I sent a couple of questions about specific bills. It's probably not worth taking the time up here to do them, but maybe I can catch up with you, or you can look for the email. You want me to send it again?
Let me look for it. I'm sorry. It's...
Yeah, it's been busy. I get it.
Well, and I admit, actually, last week was... I was also sick all week, so...
I didn't know that. I'll re-up.
That's okay. That's okay. No, but I'm glad you raised it. I will look for it, and if I don't see it, Councilmember Dibala, I will absolutely email you tonight, and you can resend it. We'll set up a time, and we'll chat.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. But just real quickly, I just wanted to say on the record while you're still here, since you're not required to stay through the whole meeting, that Ann was super nice to me, and even though she was busy, she came from across the Senate side to come and hang out with me for a while in the room. And I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate that, particularly since I was all spicy with you on the record before, and she was consummate professional.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ann. And I know I had shared interest in that cannabis bill as well. So definitely, I don't know to what extent that's happened already, but I know in our MML correspondence, I've shared the cannabis language with the current president of the Montgomery County Chapter of MML. And I don't know to what extent other, like, MML at large is watching this bill, but it may have some broad implications for a lot of municipalities and counties as well to be... Have some eyes. It's quite large. It's like 80 pages, 80-plus pages?
88.
88? I started thumbing through it. I was like, okay, this isn't going to be a quick read. But definitely will be one to watch because, you know, we've talked quite a bit about trying to identify those opportunities for alternative sources of revenue. And so the cannabis bill could be one of those. And I know with all the bills that just come through, we'll need to kind of comb through some of the newer ones that have come through as well. But I was glad to see that one come through.
Absolutely. And Mayor Circe, I apologize. There was one thing I forgot to mention that's very important. The just cause eviction legislation has been introduced, and it's... The House bill has a hearing on the 24th, I believe, in February. And I know that folks would very much appreciate if... Whether it's new mayor or someone else from the city were to testify on that bill.
Yes. Do we have prior testimony? I'm assuming we probably have some history of testimony on that one.
Many years, many, many years.
Of testimony. All right. Let's make sure...
We can brush that off.
About getting set up for that one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak?
I'm just curious, on the just cause eviction, do you also need individual residents to come out somehow? Should we try to tap residents? Is that... Are we past that point, and that's just, you know, unlikely to move?
So...
How important it is right now. Yeah.
Right, right. I think... So actually, let me check in with Delegate Wilkins to see, kind of, like, there... In Annapolis, part of the strategy is figuring out, you know, what are the hearings where you, you know, try to turn out 20, 30 people? And what are the hearings where, you know, you don't want to overdo it? This bill has been in front of them multiple times. So you're raising, actually, a really good question because, you know, maybe what it needs to help push it over the finish line is, you know, a few more real people stories. I don't know that, you know, five folks, five residents of Tacoma Park, you know, is in and of itself persuasive. It would be interesting if we had residents, tenants, from various jurisdictions around the state, including Tacoma Park, testifying, just in terms of the... representing the areas where the committee members live that they represent. So I think that's a really good idea. Let me, if I can, circle back with you. I'll touch base with Delegate Wilkins tomorrow and see kind of how she wants to shape the hearing.
Great. Thank you so much. Hey, Seeing No More Lights. Thank you so much, Ann, for taking time out. And we have a busy couple of weeks ahead with all of the bills that were introduced over the last 48 hours.
Yep. Well, I promise to flag the important ones. They're all important, the really super important ones.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And next on our agenda, given that I have accidentally lost it... I believe it's public comments. It is. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move to public comments. Do we have any public comments on the voting items? Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and congratulations on your elections. I haven't had an opportunity to give you those congratulations yet. So thank you very much for running and serving. On January 15th, proposals were due for redevelopment of the current Recreation Center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue. Tonight, the council is voting on a total replacement of the roof at the current Recreation Center. The bidder suggested by the city staff offers a 20-year guarantee on the roof and a five-year guarantee on workmanship. Given that the property redevelopment will most likely begin within a year or two, tearing down the entire building, including a brand-new roof, is puzzling to me. Why is a new roof rather than perhaps substantial patching in the best interest of tax-paying residents of the city? An honest question. Am I missing something here? And I'm truly honest about that. I just don't understand. It would seem that if the roof couldn't be patched to make a couple more years, perhaps it is manifestly unsafe now and should not be in use. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Burn Kelly. I'm from Ward Three. And first of all, I want to tell you, your job is not a thankless job, but it's a tough job, and I'm really thankful that you got elected, and you're sitting where you're sitting. And it's a hard job, and it's an underpaid job. And I appreciate not just the staff, because they're full-time jobs, but this job is woefully underpaid, and I hope that we can change that in the future. But I'm here to talk about an ongoing issue. You know, when we get sick or someone we love, we're fortunate enough to have medical insurance, and we find out some grave news, we get one opinion, and then we were told usually, you know, you need to get a second opinion. And I came here in the fall because I requested that Jamal look into the storm water management engineering that's going on related to Circle Woods and the houses which are downstream of the Circle Woods. Because we've done a lot of new projects, five. Sycamore Avenue, Poplar Avenue, Spring Avenue, Allegheny Avenue, and now Cockrell Avenue, the biggest. And we're adding water to a 100-year floodplain and waters of the United States. And I'm quite versed in this process, having worked for civil engineering firms. And we're not following the protocols and even some of the regulations about adding water to an existing floodplain and adding waters without treatment into the waters of the United States. So I actually believe we're in violation of some federal regulations. But my concern is that I live... My property is just south of the infall. So everything that comes in to Circle Woods overtops because the pipe to relieve the infall, the input, is not great enough. And there are five houses in direct line, and nine houses total, that have suffered flooding, and mine especially, because my house is directly across the street. And I appreciate that LIDC and Darrell and the staff came out and looked, but that's not what I'm asking for. And unfortunately, there was a big distraction the last time I was here, and we kind of lost sight. And I know Jamal went through some other stuff, and we had an election. But now we have a new chance to look into this matter. I want a peer review by an independent engineer of the engineering that's gone into all the projects that are depositing water into the Circle Woods. I want immediate action that prevents my property from being destroyed. I'm trying to rent my basement apartment. How do I tell them, oh, I'm sorry, you have to come out the door and bail every time we get a heavy rain? And I have the photographs and videos to show you at any time, and I thank you very much for looking into this matter and doing something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Can you email it to me, whatever you just said you had?
Sure. It's in the record.
Well, I know, but you said you had your stuff, so I'll look at it.
Any other public comments on voting items? Any comments on other items? Excellent.
Hello, everybody. You all know me, Ward Two, Mary Jane Machuie. I don't... I feel like, what do I have to do for you all to do something to help my son and people like him? I did an impromptu survey, and there's over 200 people with autism alone that live in the confines of Tacoma Park, but yet you're not doing a damn thing. And I don't care if I... I'm so angry. I'm getting angrier and angrier. My son's getting sicker and sicker, and no one's helping me. And you want to spend all this money to buy a library that won't help him, and he refuses to go any lighter because he was unjustly accused when he was younger of stealing a book from the blankety-blank library. And he refuses because I have to ever step and foot that library again. And I don't like the fact that he's being prejudiced against because of his autism, and he's biracial. I'm just sick. I'm sick of it. And building community... What's this about mental health? There's nothing about mental health. This is Page Three of the Tacoma Park News. Not a blankety-blank thing about mental health in here. I thought we were supposed to look at mental health issues. There's nothing about mental health. This guy does cardiology and general practitioner. I called the number here for Dr. Samuel. A woman answered the phone. You know what she said when I asked? I said, I need mental health. You know what she said? Call your general practitioner. What good is that? I'm just so tired of it. And then I'm getting... I'm getting... I'm just... I can't take it much longer. When I was waiting in line, thank you, I did get the $1,000 back. But that's like a Band-Aid. It's a big sore. Needs more... I wish all the people who have these libraries, little libraries, would give that money to my son for an ADU for him. He needs it desperately. We have a very tiny 925-square-foot house, and you're welcome to come in there if you don't believe me. You think I'm lying. I live in a mansion. I don't. I wanted a few houses in Tacoma Park that's that small, and the developers are at my heels. I keep getting their phone calls and their mail. I'm sick of it, you know? But yet there's a people on my block who's building a four-story mega mansion, and they're selling it for over a million dollars. Why can't they turn it into a home for people with disabilities? Why? They're going to sell it to some millionaire. You have to be a millionaire to buy that house. I'm sorry. I just... And there's no group, racial group, that treats people like my son right. He's been bullied by blacks, whites, you name it, immigrants, non-immigrants. He's been bullied, and I'm sick and tired of it. He can't speak up for himself. And one last question. Will I be... My son be able to live in one of this beautiful library? Answer me.
Ms. Machuie, your time is up. Thank you. Do we have any other comments on any other matters tonight?
Yeah, I don't think I introduced myself. First time, Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, Ward Three. I'll be quick and brief on this. We've been treated to financials and budgets and staff reports. There are all sorts of commentaries about whether or not we are in deficit spending and what constant yield rate is and more or less arcane accounting principles. And people have gotten into arguments about whether it's deficit spending or something else or whatever goes on. I've heard this from others, and I have more or less simple request. Could council request from staff a simple chart? Chart would contain three numbers: what we had the beginning of the fiscal year, what we spent, and what we have at the end of the fiscal year. If that could be done for the past five years and in the proposed budget for fiscal '24, it would certainly help clarify the condition and direction of the city for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, public comments, any comments online? Perfect. All right. So we will move on to council comments. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I just... I did want to note to the senior staff that I have two separate public events to discuss, so I just wanted to be mindful of the time so that people would know. Nonetheless, this week, I would like to talk about two things that are sort of related to the discussions that we've had here, and that is the participation in public forums. I participated in two public forums this week. First one was on the Purple Line with residents of Ward Six. And the second one was the hearing in which I participated in yesterday. I'll try to get to both of them. Both of them are on Zoom or the appropriate websites if you want to watch them. I would talk about them both for two reasons. On the first one, for the Purple Line, there was... There are mandatory meetings that go across the different station lines in the Purple Line, and so this was the University Avenue one. And I would just like to say that it is clear that Mayor Circe, former councilperson Circe, and any number of people in the District 20 Coalition have worked very hard on this issue. They know all the people and the players and everything. They know all the people and the players and everything, and all those people and players were at that meeting. And then they said a bunch of fatuous and platitudinous things about any number of things related to the quality of life in the University Avenue corridor. And because they were all fatuous and they were on public record, I just asked and pointed questions. And then the residents asked and pointed questions, and they said things like they had a rapid-response thing, team for potholes, and they said other things about their staging and process. And at the end of it, not only was I a little heated, because I live over there, and the residents were exceedingly poignant, the result was the next day, if you have driven down University Avenue, you will find that you have a whole new lane of traffic. And I am not arrogant enough to assume that it was all directly related to me almost screaming at people and threatening potential direct action as the next step, but they did also say they were going to have a coalition whereby we would have some sort of joint committee of the jurisdictions that are affected in that area. And that wouldn't have happened if they hadn't done what they did so that I could lose it on people. So the next time, we moved to the other events of yesterday, and that was about restrictive covenants and whether or not you can en masse, remove restrictive covenants from your town. And there's some complexities about it with regard to the law. It's a common law issue with regard to property. But in the list of things that they were talking about, and please forgive me, there were, they did four hearings yesterday, and there was a hearing on the Local Containment Association repair and rehab funds, which is basically them trying to give, people coming to ask for money to have their infrastructure in their homeowners association replaced, even though usually those things are expressly removed from those things by homeowners associations. And so they, since they no longer have the democratic processes, they want to give them some money. Then, the next one was a long conversation about the regulatory control of running bamboo. And they had lots of different, well-situated and affluent neighborhoods that spoke. Then they talked about the charter amendment notice, which was a good point, because we don't have any record. There was an awesome conversation allegedly about adaptive reuse and changing buildings over. And then the last thing I would like to say is, we got to the thing that I was talking about, or right before we got to that, we talked about rent increases and notice. And there was a, there's a distinction between where it is and where they'd like to put it. A couple of business interests got up and said things about how no notice is necessary at all, and people should contact their landlord to ensure that they're not going to get an increase. And they had a long conversation about that with some lobbyists. Then they got to unlawfully restricted covenants, and the chairman said, well, this one should be short, and we are going to go quickly. And so I thought that was odd, because it's a real issue over here, and it's an actual issue in my neighborhood. And again, I apologize for being a little long. And so the first thing that I said when it was my turn to talk was, you know, I apologize, but this is a real important issue, so I don't know why you guys are being so dismissive about it. And then I talked about the structures and all these things. And then we had a conversation, and then there were some questions, and then the chair tried to move on again, and then because he was trying to move on, he just didn't allow me to testify again. But every other person who had testified as an additional person had a chance to answer the question if the delegates did that. So procedurally, there's a couple of things about that, but that's neither here nor there. The point is that once we got to the conversation, they tried to say that they didn't understand why this would even be an issue. And I was fortunate enough to be able to say, well, actually, once I was allowed to speak, that our neighborhood association had a nice, long conversation on our listener about the realities of this in our lives as members of the New Hampshire Gardens community. And so I raised a little bit of a fuss. It's a great bill. It's actually legally brilliant, and I'd encourage everybody to support it, or the talent to support it. We put in stuff to support it. But my point is this, that if you do not participate on public record or otherwise, no one will ever know. People will think that they can get by with things and they can do the slap and handshake thing where they just say, well, you know, this is business and practice, and we're all very sophisticated. But it's not how it's supposed to work. Public meetings, procedure, sessions, asking questions, trying to find answers to things. And so again, I think it's important that we understand these things and approach our future as a jurisdiction who isn't necessarily afforded the respect that we deserve as such. Because the funny thing was, the very first thing I said was, I'm aware that I do not look like what you would have expected to come here from Tacoma Park. And they all laughed and nodded their heads.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I just want to, speaking of putting things on the public record, I totally agree, and I want to thank our residents who came and put, gave some messages to us. Bob, thank you for caring about our fiscal stewardship and the roof. I don't know the answer, but I'm glad that you brought that up, as well as questions about the simplifying and clarifying our budget process. It's been confusing to me. I'll be very honest, and so we, we hopefully will do better. And I would just ask for him to have a proper response to his request for peer review. I don't know what the legality is, but a courtesy of responding to the substance of his, of his request would, would be appropriate. And thank you, Mary. I'm sorry, and I'm good, glad to see you in bringing up this issue, and you can know, I'm new at the council, and we are, there is, there is interest in mental health issues. It's not lost on us, but I don't know the answer, but, but there is, you do have our ear. Thank you.
Councilmember Honsak?
I just want to, I just want to repeat that I, and I won't repeat it all, but I'm really grateful to those who have come out for public comment. It takes time and energy to put those thoughts together and to sit here and be here with us, and we do hear you, so thank you. And I just wanted to share a few quick things, following up on the Maryland Transit Authority Community Advisory Team meetings happening on the Purple Line. I had not previously been very aware of these events. It sounds like it is something that we should all be paying more attention to as the Purple Line is moving rapidly again. It will have big impacts on us. So for, for Ward Five or anybody else that, you know, that is interested from Tacoma, there's one coming up tomorrow on the February, excuse me, I think I have that right, February ninth at six o'clock PM, and, and I hope that some people will, will consider showing up. Excuse me. Yes, actually, no, the one tomorrow is Silver Spring, right? The one tomorrow is Silver Spring. There's another one, I believe, on February the 23rd, or February 21st. I'm sorry, I don't have that one in front of me, but do look on their website, the Community Advisory Team, Purple Line, Maryland Transit Authority website for the Purple Line. But, but note 6:00 PM tomorrow. And then, and then I, two other things. I wanted to say thank you to the LIDC group and the Public Works Group. I was able to attend one of the stormwater meetings today. It was fantastic to have residents come out and feel heard for the first time in a really long time. I could see the gratitude, and people really, you know, they also did offer some ideas right there on site of some things that residents could do, and I was appreciative of that, and, and so were my neighbors. And then finally, I wanted to share, for those who know, one of my priorities as a council member is to really improve communication across my ward. I am just starting to experiment with the paper newsletter, and I just thought I would share that out. I created my first, very simple, two-page paper newsletter in addition to my electronic weekly updates. Unfortunately, I had planned to put real estate boxes all around the neighborhood, and because of supply chain issues, they haven't come in yet, but I went ahead and started handing them out at bus stops and such. So any ideas on better methods of communication in my ward or any others, please send them to me by email. Thanks.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, thank you. I stole my thunder on the stormwater. I've been now to three of the LIDC stormwater visits, and I'm very impressed with the quality of the advice we're getting and the quality of the research. I'm looking forward to the report. Midwinter Play Day, am I, is somebody else going to talk about that? All right, you go ahead.
You got the mic. You got the mic.
Midwinter Play Day, come play, Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00. Middle school? Elementary school? Middle school? Middle school. Come see Congressman Raskin. Once again, do Simon says. And Habitat, last but not least, Habitat for Humanity is taking applications for the, for one half of the duplex on Garland, someone dropped out, and there's an opportunity to apply till February 20th. I don't have Wi-Fi here. I haven't figured it out. It's probably simple.
All right. Councilmember Honsak?
I just wanted to correct for the record, the Community Advisory Team meeting is the second one. There's one, there is one tomorrow, February the 9th, but there's another one in regards to Long Branch, which is a little bit closer for some people to Ward Five at least, to the north side, and that is at 6:00 PM on the 21st.
Excellent. Thank you. And Councilmember Fulter?
Just, just a quick clarification that the Midwinter Play Day is here and at Piney Branch.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Saved me that, that note. So I will be attending the Midwinter Play Day, so look forward to seeing everyone there on Sunday. We also have an MML, Montgomery County Chapter, meeting that is tomorrow, so some of my colleagues will be joining, I believe that is via Zoom, so, and we will have the opportunity to meet with the Montgomery County Police Chief during that, during that meeting. Additionally, I know that Councilmember Gibson and DeBala and myself, I know we're getting lots of emails regarding mail delivery issues. We appreciate everyone reaching out and are working to identify mechanisms, to contact, not only, there's already been correspondence with Raskin's office, but we're also working to identify other ways to get some, some information from our local post offices regarding absence of mail delivery. I did learn today that it is a widespread issue in some areas outside of the city of Tacoma Park, so we're not alone, but it's tax season and people need their mail, so we'll, we'll work to come up with some way to rectify that matter. And I believe that is, oh, I also just want to thank all of those that have come out tonight. Your public comments have been extremely, extremely helpful. Ms. Machuie, I know that we've been corresponding, and so I am committed to reaching out to try to help you with identifying a provider. So we're still, I'm still sending some emails about that, but we'll definitely be in touch and making sure that we provide those resources for your, for your son, so.
When?
Yeah. No, I, I hear you. I hear you. And also appreciate the comments that we've received regarding aspects of the budget. Mr. Anderson, I was actually already going to propose even for our budget amendments to have it be more cumulative in nature. So we have our adopted budget, and then Budget Amendment One, what's the impact on the bottom line? Budget Amendment Two, and that will just help you, help me, to understand, help me to understand cumulatively what's going on with our budget over time, so, so I appreciate that feedback. And I think that is all I have. So thank you all so much. And with that, we will jump into, I'll turn things over to City Manager Fox. City Manager Fox, do you have any comments for tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment this evening. Just want to inform you that on Monday, staff is very excited. We'll have our new ARPA manager in place and onboard, and we're definitely looking forward to Andrew to join us.
And so next item on the agenda is adoption of minutes.
Yes, Dad, I sent the ballot. Late, and I, and they're late, so I'd ask that you defer.
That we defer.
We'd be talking a lot more now than before, so like, it's all right.
No worries. So we will make sure that the latest version of the minutes for January the 9th and the 11th, thank you very much, January the 9th and the 11th will be on next week's agenda. Okay? Perfect. Just trying to make sure. All right. So the next item is a voting session on the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY 2023 Budget Amendment Number Five. So I would turn things over to the city manager, just to make sure that there's no modifications or things that are important for the council to know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no new information, and staff is ready to provide tonight. It's the same information provided last week. The only notion is the environmental and the equity considerations were updated by staff per direction of council last week.
All right. So would someone like to move the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY 23 Budget Amendment Number Five?
I'd like to move that we table that in, in light of whatever it is that you were about to propose. That's what I think we should do, unless that's a part of the procedure differently than what you.
I would say let's just move it and then have a second, and then we can discuss the, any modifications.
All right, then. So move.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. So now we have the budget amendment on the floor for discussion. Do we, excellent. Councilmember Small?
Yeah, I just, I just like to say two things. Number one, I'm about to get up and walk around as per the malady, but number two, it would seem to me, from the last couple of conversations, the one thing that came clear to me late in the evening was that it's possible we may just be talking about different budgetary philosophies and thereby jumbling, jargon. And so I feel like it would be easier if we just knew what hard numbers were at X-point and Y-point, and then what we put in it, and therefore we would have like a hard, new budget thing, and it would be ratified, and it would almost be like one piece of paper you could hand out to everybody that showed all the change. So that's what I think we should do, and I apologize for taking my constitutional
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, I have a number of questions about the, questions, comments about the rest of the budget, but I would like to, to start by offering an amendment before I forget about it again. Sorry about that. So you all heard a couple weeks ago that we had way more applications for tree planting than we had money. We had budgeted for a pilot program last year. The pilot program was wildly successful. Isn't that fabulous? And so rather than wait till the next fiscal year to fulfill those requests that people have applied for to be, to have trees planted last fall, I'm going to propose that we transfer some money from the tree fund, which collects the money from people who have to pay a fee in lieu of planting a tree when they take a tree down. It has a couple hundred thousand, more than a couple hundred thousand dollars in it. It's plenty money in it, money in it. The purpose of that fund is specifically to plant trees, so I am, I have, and I'm going to propose an amendment to the budget amendment, that's a little, to transfer $25,000, that's the estimate I got from staff, from that tree fund to the line for the urban forest program services and contracts, so it can go into this current contract for the tree planting program, the Tree Tacoma Program. So I wrote it down as a, an amendment, I didn't read it literally word for word, that I can pass to the city clerk. read it literally word for word, that I can pass to the city clerk, and I'd like to propose an amendment to that effect.
Do we have a?
Second?
Second to that amendment?
I do.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this amendment?
I have a question.
Councilmember Honsak?
Can you clarify what that money otherwise would normally be utilized for, and why it's just sitting there?
Well, I don't know that I would quote say it's just sitting there.
You said there are 200, 200,000?
Yes, but I would, I would defer to the Public Works Director, who conveniently enough is here to explain this for us.
Yeah, thank you. This city has a tree fund that's funded both from fees for tree replacement, the fee in lieu, as well as fines associated with violations, and those funds are used for the tree planting. In the past, the council has authorized $25,000 of those funds to be used annually for tree replanting, which has been previously to this fiscal year planted on public right-of-way. It was the source of the funding for public spaced trees. It was decision of the council through the last revision of the tree ordinance and the new tree canopy policy to expand the tree planting program to include planting on private property. So the Urban Forest Division established the Tree Tacoma Program, and for our first year, we had a budget of $45,000, an increase over the previous 25 that would go to that program. Again, it was the first time out the door with that type of program with KC Trees. For any of you that aren't familiar with that, we have a ton of information on the city's website that I'd encourage you to take a look at. But the, the funds are specifically used only for tree planting. They can be used for no other programs, so they are available for the city to use for tree planting. It's our hope that through this new pilot program, it's no longer pilot, but launched and kicked off, that we would begin more advanced funding each year for the program, to the tune of 70 to 100,000 dollars. The trees are covered entirely, both the consulting service, the selection of the trees, and the planting of the trees, so there's no cost to the property owner. The current rate of funds into the tree fund, based on past record, ranges from 30 to 80,000 dollars a year, so it can, it can vary widely, a lot of times as a result of fines. So the assumption is that the fund will continue to grow, and so we're trying to actively program the use of those funds for tree planting.
So, so just so I can understand, and I'm not sure if this is for you or for the council member, but can you help me understand if, if we're suggesting a budgetary amendment of 25,000 from this fund that exists, what, why, why would we do that now versus, I don't know, wait, you know, why wouldn't we allocate the entire amount? I'm just, I'm a little bit unclear about why, why this particular number and why now?
Well, my thought was let's cover the people who did apply.
I see. Okay.
For which we no longer have money. So.
You mean because, oh, I see, because this is an amendment above and beyond what we knew we had in the fund at the beginning of the year.
Right, in the fall, we, exactly. In the fall, we advertised, and a whole bunch of people applied, and there was only so much money, and then there's this many more trees that people have requested.
Right.
So rather than try to add even more and boost the program further, I was just looking to meet the demand of the people, of the people who've already requested.
Okay.
So that estimate is 25,000 dollars.
Yeah, there is another reason for that amount. In consultation with KC Trees, we allocated, they allocated a certain number of trees for us, so we first had to find out whether they had trees available, because we, we were programmed for a certain number based on our funding. So they told us they could accommodate an additional, originally $28,000 worth of trees. We have a set price for the trees at 325 or 312, I can't remember what, but at any rate. So that amount of, of additional funding is, is what KC Trees is able to add in addition to our prior agreement for this current fiscal year.
So should we make that?
For next fiscal year, we will negotiate with them for what amount they think is available.
So we should potentially make that 28,000 then, to align with what they're able to do, if we wanted to?
Right, it's a difference of one, you know, a few thousand dollars.
Another, another property. If I, if I can also understand, would, would 28,000 or 25,000 meet the demand, the existing demand that we have from residents? Or what's that number?
Yeah, I would have to go back to look at the, the number of site visits they've been able to do and the number of signed agreements that they have, but it would just basically move us further through the process than we currently are.
Okay, so, so one more question. Pardon me, indulge me. If, if, if we take 28 or 25,000 out now, how much are we left with as of right now, or projections, either one, whatever you've got handy, for, let's say, next year? I'm, I'm interested in what this does to our bottom line for next year, and, and also what I'm thinking in the back of my mind is, it seems like a great program, and I support it generally, but I also really do want to see trees getting planted on public right-of-way or, or on private property specifically that is also going to serve a dual purpose for our residents, for reducing heat zones in the area and places where pedestrians, especially our lower-income and more vulnerable populations, are spending time. And I might, I might want to suggest that we prioritize the placement of those trees in those places, if, on, even if it's on private property, if that's, if that's within the array of options. But again, that's, that's a lot of information that might need to be discussed offline.
Right, well, it's, any of these topics that I'm here to talk about tonight can go down a very deep, deep, deep level of information, and probably it would, we do have an annual update from the Urban Forest Manager, so we should probably get that on the schedule, so you all have a better understanding, the full breadth and, and depth of the program.
That would be very helpful.
That said, at the beginning of this fiscal year, the tree fund had 258,000 dollars in it. We allocated 45 of that, which would be subtracted from that. I do not know what the current additional funding into the tree fund has been as a result of payments for fee in lieu. We have not had much fine activity this year. It seems to come and go, year to year. So there'll be 45,000 minus 25, 25, you know, 28, 25, whatever, but there'll still be plenty of funds available in, in the tree fund. Our, our goal, it was to hit the program very fast and try to get a lot of active uptake. Based on the guidance of the council and our own programmatic goals, we are focused on areas that are under-treed as a result of a priority, and also for multifamily and commercial spaces, so we've had an active program reaching out to those property owners. We can't just plant a tree on private property. We have to have the permission of the property owner. So it always, one of the things we like about the KC Tree Program is that they offer the consulting services, can spend the time on-site with the property owner, relieve any anxiety or fears, and really identify the best locations and the best type of trees for that spot. We also have an active program for identifying public tree planting spaces, so also in our, on our program, we plant trees annually every year, usually about 100 trees total. So that's also included in, in each year's budget, in public right-of-way. So this year's will be a combination of both public and private trees, again, trying to get us further along in the process. And locations for trees also are not, it's not an easy thing. You know, there's utility lines both below and overhead, there's conditions, so each location has to be identified, and, and the Urban Forest Manager has, through his intern this year, has identified tree planting locations throughout the city, so they have a pretty good idea of available public spaces, and we're now trying to ramp up our private spaces.
Okay. So, so I did have two other areas to, to bring up, but let's, yeah, let's get this one down.
So, so you proposed an amendment?
Yes.
Amendment, and so it is now still on the floor, it's been seconded, and now we would need to, to vote on whether or not we want that amendment to be included in this particular budget amendment.
Mayor, seriously, I'm sorry to interrupt, but may I offer an amendment? Is that out of the Order of Rules to, to, a 20? No?
Unless you.
Unless, to the number?
A friendly amendment to.
A friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment, yes.
Would you consider increasing it to the 28,000, if that number is a solid number?
Well, I, I would.
Yeah. I, I would propose to amend it to 28,000 if it sounds like we have that approval from the, they have the number of trees to meet that need.
Yeah, okay.
Is that, sorry, I, I'm not?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just double checking. I got numbers for.
Okay.
Another, we're good. 28, let's call 28.
Okay. So that's a friendly amendment that we're, we're fine with, with doing. So can we just, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what this amendment entails, just?
I was going to ask you if you restate.
Yep. Can we restate the amendment?
Can we restate the amendment? To transfer 28,000 dollars from the existing tree fund to the, the services and contracts line of the Urban Forest Program, for the purpose of the Tree Tacoma, fulfilling, planting trees through the Tree Tacoma Program.
Yeah, I just want to say that the City Finance Director will know the specific budget codes that it needs to get to, but basically you have to take funds from the tree fund, put it into a revenue account, and also put a matching expenditure account in. So there's sort of three transactions that need to happen as a result of this.
Okay, that was, that was not part of the message I got, or if it was, I didn't understand it, but we can get, I put the little place.
Usually you have revenue expenditures. This is kind of unique, because it's not general fund revenue. It's, it's funds, funds from the tree fund. So you take them out of the tree fund, you put it in a revenue account, and you note a, a matching expenditure in an expenditure account.
Okay. Can we, can we just have?
Yes, so this is first reading of the ordinance, so at second reading, you'll see the new language that describes what.
Very helpful.
The, the more specifics. So right now, we are voting on the transfer, and then the specifics in terms of how that is reflected in the budget amendment for the second reading is what we will see during the next round. So all those in favor of the amendment to transfer the resources from, was it 28,000?
28,000.
Yep, from the, the tree fund to the.
Services and contracts?
Yes, services. I think it's services.
Through that other revenue.
Through that other stream. Please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Any opposed? Or a stay? I'm sorry.
A stay.
You have stay. Okay. All right. Got through that. All right, Councilmember DeBala, your next one?
Mayor, could, could I just have a follow-up to the, what Director Brinkwith, we're talking about, a, a report coming up, and I just hope that that report on the tree can, can have a map showing where, where the trees are, are planted, and, and maybe even what, what kind of tree it is, but it's, it's important to, I think that would be useful for us to, to see. So it's a recommendation.
Thank you. And I believe our, our Director of Public Works, I believe we have done maps of our tree canopy, correct? And so we, we do have information regarding the exact location of our canopy. Councilmember Fulter?
I just wanted to say that the, the environmental considerations and the racial equity considerations were really good in this. Like, I know that last week, you know, I was one of the people that was not happy, especially with the racial equity, and they were really thoughtful, and I would really love it if all the residents would read them. Like, they, they were really good, so.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Councilmember DeBala?
Okay.
I believe you had a couple of more items.
Yeah. So I had asked last week for the costs of the promotions relative to the salary, relative to the vacant positions, that, and, and we have that list, and thank you. So my question though is still, we have the, we have the, the costs of the position, position, the, the acting positions, but they are, here's my question, are they in this budget amendment or not? Or is this just the, the, the total of the unspent salaries? Which one am I looking at?
What's, what's in the budget amendment 5 is just the, the vacancy savings?
Okay. And so how would you, you propose we account for the, for the spending that, that has to, that's happening relative to the increased, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm tripping over my words here. We're, we're all, so we're, so we have money that we're not spending for the salary increases, that's, I mean, for the salary, for the positions that are vacant, that's in this budget amendment. And then we have money that we are spending for acting positions, which is great. Thank you for the people who are doing that. No matter how much we pay you, it's not enough. But I want to know where we account for that. Is that in another budget amendment, or is that from some other pot?
So with, with the.
Because if I understood, and maybe I didn't get this part right, but you were, I think you said that this is taking this money out of the budget altogether. It's not moving it from one place to another. It's.
Yeah, it's, 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 so what, what this budget amendment would do is, is we'll take what staff can actually spend, so it would take that expenditure line down.
Right.
And so based off a code, anytime a, an employee moves into an acting role and works at a class, by code, they have to move up to 6%. And so with 6%, and, and that's what the Director Cannon had provided council.
Right, right, that, that table rating.
And when we do that, we use the vacancy savings and apply that against the, the salary that they have. So you would take the vacancy savings and, and minus it, subtract it from the, the other portion, and, and so.
So it, so then if I'm, and I really don't want to mess up the works here, but if I'm following you, then we don't want to take all of these dollars out of the budget now because we need some of them for, to cover the acting salaries? That's, that's what I'm confused about.
Most, most of, most of the salaries here is just for July 1st through January of what wasn't going to be spent anyway.
Right.
There will still be some vacancy savings moving forward.
Right.
Because it will still take us time to be able to recruit for a lot of positions across the organization. And where you see on that Director Cannon put where a, a lot of the net, so there's, we will still be using a lot of the vacancy savings to pull for the, the few acting positions that we have. We'll be applying that against the vacancy savings that we have in the organization. So there still will be some savings there.
Okay, so if we have, if we have, go ahead.
So, so one of the things that I want to make sure, again, this is, it kind of goes into semantics, right? And I, I apologize to residents that are watching, but the salaries of those staff that are currently acting, where they were before they started acting should have been accounted for in the budget, right? So we've already paid for those salaries of where they were. So if you are rec, Director, you were paid a salary, it was accounted for in the budget. We've made you acting, so the only add to the budget should be the pay differential for you.
Right.
As a result of your increase, because you got promoted for a, a set amount of time. So the, the, the savings is not the person, the difference between that person's salary and the vacant position salary. The savings should be the difference between the pay differential that that individual received, because their salary should have been accounted for in the budget. I was going to be here, whether I got this temporary promotion or not, and my, my salary should have been accounted for in the budget, but because I got this temporary bump up, I now am getting paid a little bit more, and that little bit more is what is the actual added cost of having the actings. So all of the pay differentials is what we need to calculate, and that pay differential is what should ultimately be what you subtract from those vacancies, and that would be your cost savings. Does that make sense? Because you counted for that person's salary, their base salary, should have been accounted for in the budget.
And I, and I think it is done that way, except for that last step of subtracting the money, of subtracting the money that's going out.
So, so, so that's the difference between what is the actual vacancy savings. It is those staff that the positions were vacant, and for however long they were vacant, and then you had to temporarily promote people. Their base salary of where they were should have already been accounted for in the budget, because you were going to plan to pay them anyway. But you now have an added cost, because they now have a temporary promotion. So the difference between that pay differential that they received, because they're acting, and those vacancies, that money that you have there should be what that net. and those vacancies, that money that you have there should be what that net savings of, of salaries would be for you. So, so that's how my mind works around temporary pay increases for people. It's something you didn't budget for. You budgeted for, uh, a direct, let's say, uh, making, yeah, you budgeted for a deputy city manager. You budgeted for that position. But you also budgeted for a director of rec and a planning manager. And so because they've taken on these new roles, they've gotten additional monies. Rightfully so, they're doing more work. So in the budget though, I've already accounted for perhaps seventy-five percent, eighty percent, ninety percent of their salary. We're now just talking about that pay differential. So, so that's the piece that I, I want to make sure, um, at least from, from my read, wasn't immediately clear with the data that was provided. Um, it seemed more like it was the whole salary and not necessarily the pay differential. So, so that to me is, is the difference. So if you're talking about what are the added costs, the added cost would be the pay differential that everyone that got a temporary bump up because they're acting received. And then the vacancies and the salaries that you didn't spend on those positions that are vacant, those are your savings, and the difference between the two is your net. So, so that's how I saw it.
That, that's, that's how Director Cannon provided the information, looking at, um, the positions, the vacant positions, and, uh, subtracted that from the act, what the acting role is, the differential. And then that's where the, the net came out, where it's the net savings for each of those positions she laid out.
Some of them look quite high. So some of them, what I, what I saw was some of them was like, very high, like monthly ten, ten K or so, which led me to believe that that was the full salary.
Yeah, I took the, the salary and divvied it up over twelve months, and that would be the monthly cost.
Yeah, but, but again.
The salary of the acting role.
Not the additional.
Not the differential.
Not director, deputy, difference. So not the difference, but the whole thing?
Right, I didn't take the difference between their, their old salary and the acting role. I just did the acting role.
Right, and I, and I got that, I got that if you compare that to this program, to the vacant positions, you're still saving money, but it, it's not as much as I had hoped.
But it's, but it's not an accurate account, because we've already accounted for their base salary in the budget.
Right, and that led me to wonder if we really should, should take all of this mu- all of this salary money out if we're gonna need it as we go forward. But, but again, if I'm looking at the whole salary, then maybe I'm not looking at the right thing.
We're not looking at the right thing. Uh, it, it, we need the pay differential. And your pay differential is not going to be that much, because those, those salaries, again, we've already, taxpayers have already paid for that, right? Those base salaries have already been paid. What we're talking about right now is the, the, the differential that people are being paid because they are temporarily filling in the gap. And so some of these look like ten thousand dollars, I was like, ooh, that's a big bump! Cause that's like, what, a hundred twenty K a year? That's a lot! So, um, so that's why. You're awesome, don't get me wrong. I don't know, like, a pay bump of a hundred twenty K!
So, okay, so that, so that was my question, was should we be taking account, all of these vacant salary, the, the funds for all of these vacant salaries, should we be subtracting them now if we don't understand? I don't understand how much we need to use to cover. Pay differential, thank you. Trying to figure out how to say this. So that was my question, and that, obviously, there's no answer to that right the second, but that, that was, that was my main question. And my second question had to do with, let me find my notes. Um, just to say that I had asked some other questions, and one of them was about, just so everybody knows, that I asked, um, last week about the ARPA manager and where the monies for that were accounted for, because those are, the, there's a chunk there. That's not in here, and it'll be accounted for at some other point. But just so everybody's clear, there's a bunch of vacant positions, but that one isn't in here. This is just the ARPA money that's in here, if I understood it correctly, is for specific projects, not for the, um, the ARPA management. Did I get that right? Okay, I want to make sure I understood the answer that I got, um, and that everybody else knew what it was. And I think that might be it for me, like, that's not enough. Yes, thank you.
Okay, and, um, so I do want to jump in really quick on a couple of things, and I, I should have sent this to you all earlier, and, and for that, I apologize. But, um, the, uh, the actual totals, the grand totals across all of your tables is changing, but the contents is not. So, um, the first table shows a grand total of one point three ten mil. The fiscal considerations is showing one point five six three. And then with the, um, with the budget amendment for the stormwater, the total is showing one point five five. And all of your subtotals are showing the same amount. So if you look at table, yeah, so if you look at the first table, all of your subtotals are the same, but your grand total is showing one point three one zero. For the fiscal considerations, it's supposed to reflect your subtotal, your subtotals, but it's showing one point five six three as a grand total. When you look at your sustainability or stormwater, it still has the same totals, like, the same subtotals, but your grand total is showing one point five five.
So what's the difference? Is that just?
That's my question. Because it's, it's showing all of the same subtotals per category, so like, if you're crosswalking these tables. Yeah, so all of your subtotals are showing the same amount, but the final ta- the final grand totals for all of your tables are varying. So I don't know if that's just, it could, it could be something as simple as copying and pasting from a spreadsheet, but, but all of these totals aren't adding up. And I can't seem to figure out why. Okay. Um, uh, another thing, um, so one of the things that, um, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, learning a lot through this, in this world, um, is how, uh, difficult it is to try to backtrack, um, budget amendments. Um, I noticed that on our website, what used to be the case is we would post our budget amendments on the, um, budget website with the appropriate fiscal year tied to them. Um, but we have not posted any budget amendment information for the FY twenty-three budget. Um, and given that this is budget amendment number five, um, there should have been a number of budget amendments that have been placed, placed on our website for FY twenty-three that would allow someone to go back and double-check. Um, so you have to do a lot of work to find all of the various budget amendments, and they should be listed on the, on the budget page of the website. They were, they were listed that way up until twenty twenty-two, FY twenty-two, I mean FY, FY twenty-three, I should say. So, um, so that's one thing. Um, if we can make sure that all of the budget amendments, once they're approved, gets posted on the website, on the budget, on the budget page, um, so that it's easy for people to backtrack. Um, another item that I kind of mentioned is, um, it's kind of that same idea of allowing peo- allowing us to see the cumulative, right? So we have our adopted budget, right? We have the revenues, we have the expenditures, and then we do budget amendment one. And maybe that happens in June, right? And we, we approve an extra a hundred thousand dollars, right? Um, and then, three months later, we get another budget amendment. And that one, we save fifty bucks. And then we get another budget amendment, and that one, we approved an extra five hundred thousand dollars. And then we get another budget amendment. The problem is you can't ultimately, because what we typically receive is the difference between what was in the budget and what that individual budget amendment has changed from the original budget. You don't get to see the cumulative effect. So you don't get to see what was the impact on the budget of budget amendment one, and budget amendment two, and budget amendment three, and budget amendment four, and budget amendment five. And you can't see, as a council member, unless you do the legwork, which means you have to go and try to find all of those budget amendments. And in our case, they're not on the page, you got to search for them, to be able to do that cumulative math to see how and if we are tremendously over budget. That's something that is very helpful when you're reviewing these budget amendments. So what I would like to see us do is to add a table to our budget amendments where we are showing the cumulative impact on our budget of these budget amendments. So you would have your, uh, you would show the adopted budget, the expenditures, revenues, grand total. You would show budget amendment one and its impact on the, the actual budget numbers. And then you would see budget amendment two and its impact, so you would see a cumulative over time. So if my expenditures increased with budget, um, with budget amendment one, then I would see in budget amendment one, this is my now, now my new amount of spending in revenues. And then I would see budget amendment two, and I would say, okay, from budget amendment one, we've added another hundred thousand dollars, this is my new total, right now, for our running budget, right? Because otherwise, it's really difficult, as a council member, unless you're doing that math yourself, to try to figure out how far afield you've gone. Because you're seeing, okay, I, I voted, cause I know, I'm like, I did not vote for a two million dollar increase. I know I didn't do it, but I voted for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, right, or a hundred forty-one thousand. But that one hundred forty-one in budget amendment one, and then five hundred thousand in budget amendment two, and then, uh, fifty thousand in budget amendment three, and then, uh, another a hundred thousand dollars in budget amendment four, cumulatively, we've approved a million dollars. And no one is the wiser, because we're only seeing it in pieces. So that is something that I would like to see, and I'm happy to provide a markup of what that should consist of, but there should be a, a cumulative table that just shows how our various budget amendments are impacting or changing us from our adopted budget to over time, or like, over the course of the fiscal year. Cause I think that would be really helpful, because otherwise, you know, and, and, you know, there's a tendency to want to just take it at face value. But if we're expected to actually have to come up with hard decisions around what to not approve, I need to know how far gone I am, all right?
Otherwise, otherwise you're stuck with me reading dramatically out loud, like I did last week from individual budget amendments.
Exactly, or thumbing through lots of budget amendments.
Thank you, ma- thank you, Madam Mayor, and what I would say, if, if you take a look at page twelve when we did the fiscal health, if, if that's something similar, it's cumulative, that will break out the adopted, has the, the departments, budget amendment one, budget amendment two, and if, if, if this is something that you're talking about, we'll, we'll, we'll work with staff and we can provide.
Yep, and then that way, that could be something that's a standard part of the budget amendment.
Okay.
All right, I see lights. Councilmember Small.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, to associate myself with what you just said, but I, I, I'd also like to be a little bit more specific. Um, and, uh, again, not hiding the ball, I used to be a city manager. Um, used to have to prepare a budget every year that other people would look at, that kind of thing. So, that being said, um, I actually left, and I mentioned this earlier, that I left the other meeting trying to understand and thought I had come clear. And, um, that it was odd to me that we had some consistencies in one place, some inconsistencies in another place, and. Because people who don't like to have their money spent at all, really want to see what you were doing. We had very acrimonious budget processes, uh, but one of the things that happened was every six months after the budget, that was the first readjusted budget. And so you saw everything in a lump, and you would know what it was. And so having five of these in a row, um, presumably four of which I didn't have anything to do with, I all of a sudden said, oh, maybe that's what it is. And I even got odd sort of, uh, deep throat messages from people explaining the part of the budget that said where the money was that I kept asking about. Um, but the critical part of all of that is, in addition to that, we just had a conversation about seven percent, whether or not seven percent goes into the overall structure of the codification related to changes in grade and duties, which is all reasonable, and that might have sounded crazy coming out of my mouth, but that's exactly what just happened here. And so those things are pretty specific. And because of the way that we do the budget with regard to the funds, we give a great deal of deference to the staff in making sure that things go back into the right places. But we don't discuss the line items, ever. And then in this conversation, we talked about how there was line item data that could be provided with regard to these things. But I feel strange that I don't know what the line items are. And so I asked about this very issue of this, of the finance staff, and they told me two things. Number one, that they do keep a copy of all of the budget amendments and all of the budget ordinances somewhere. And then I said, well, great, where is it? And they said, well, I understand, it's on the website. But because I used to do these things, and I'm nerdy about these things, I went to look for those things, and I couldn't find them, so I asked the staff, and I still couldn't find it. And then the staff said confusing things to me. Because at the end of the day, it seemed like we were talking about two different things, where the finance director basically implied that she had some sort of implied mandate of fiscal responsibility and stewardship that was predated Jamal. And so when I asked her about that, I was like, well, are you saying that there is some sort of master plan of finance and austerity that we should know about? And she's like, well, no, it's just generally accepted accounting principles and whatnot. And I was like, well, that doesn't make sense. And so, if it is just me being difficult about the fact that I don't see where these numbers line up, and specifically, part of the reason is for the things that Mayor Cersei said, I don't feel comfortable thinking that I should be voting for this budget amendment. And so I personally think we should table it until we have an actual structure of an amendment document that we can clearly see all of the components of what we are doing as pertaining to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, cause that's what we're doing. I, I'll make that as a motion. I tried to do it before, but I didn't want to be rude, and I think we've got a motion on the floor. And again, because I know Robert's rule and stuff like that, I'm not trying to be rude to that motion, but I am speaking to what we are talking about here, so we could dispose of that. And I will probably still provide a motion that we do something like that anyway.
Um, just, just to clarify, um, we currently do not have a motion, um, on the floor, so.
Excellent, I would like to make a motion that we table this discussion until we have an accurate set of numbers to feel comfortable about. And that that document whereby we will be voting would include an assessment of the final totals with regard to the constant yield rate, any sort of reserves that are put into the budget initially, changes associated with it at each given budget adjustment, and a conclusion of where the money is going, what the total cost savings are, and why. In addition to whatever it is that we have that's nice and long and whatever else, because at the end of the day, somebody should be able to come in here and see what it is. They just should.
Okay, Councilmember Small, that was a lot in that motion, um, so.
Sorry to be so specific, but, you know, you got, I don't, there's a lot of colloquy going on over there about specific stuff, and, you know, if we're gonna start talking specifics, I can get down.
All right, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what the motion, uh, what the, what, what folks are, are being asked to vote on. Um, so it is my understanding, Councilmember Small, and definitely correct me if I'm wrong, um, that you are making a motion to, um, table the vote on this budget amendment. that you are making a motion to table the vote on this budget amendment until staff have come back to the council with the updated numbers, the cumulative estimates that I've the, I'm trying to make sure I got all this right. The, what did I miss, Councilmember Small?
I would say that that is a pretty concise statement of it.
requested or that added table.
The only thing I would say is, is that, like, all this savings could really be true.
There was a mention of constant yield, so I just want to make sure.
I just would like to know that it actually is. Yeah, it's like flat numbers, flat numbers where the budget started, plus the additions That's all I'm saying.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. So all those in favor?
of whatever the funds are, that I seem to call something different than what people
Discussion?
Sure, yes.
I would, I would like to ask the staff if there's anything in here that can't wait.
call around here. Then the changes.
Okay. So are you looking for a change between FY '22 and FY '23 based on where we are right
I don't know that there is, but I just want to check. It seems like a reasonable question.
The, the one question I would just ask is, is part of the budget amendment, so the
now, or is it all fiscal year '23?
I would argue that at this point, if we are doing a budget amendment, we don't necessarily
stormwater piece, is that being the 28,000, is that going to be on hold as well?
Isn't that separate resolution?
need numbers for '21, '22.
Yes, it is. It's, we're voting on that modification as part of, no.
But my understanding of the way in which we calculate fiscal years is to do '22, '23, and so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. So other than this storm-
What I mean to be saying is this current fiscal year's budget.
Yep, it's the tree thing. Okay. So we would vote, so just so that everyone understands, that the vote, this budget amendment '23. Okay, okay. So, so there's a motion on the floor to table the vote on this budget amendment until would require two votes, right? We're right now talking about the first vote. staff have confirmed the accuracy of the numbers that we've been provided, provided It will come back next week for a second vote. So the options before us is to clearly state what we would like for staff to address. a summary table that will detail the impacts of this budget amendment and the prior FY ' And then if we were to vote to move forward with the budget amendment, they would still have to come back to us next week with that modified version. That would then allow us to vote or table, but we wouldn't necess, we, we have to do two votes regardless. So we could either table this vote right now and then have two votes later, or we can vote on this amendment now with the changes that we want to have happen in the budget amendment, and then we would have to vote next week on the final version that we're reviewing. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. So whether or not we, and I guess the question for staff is, hearing what you've heard, can you make the necessary adjustments that we're talking about for this budget amendment by next week? And if the answer is you would need more time, then I would side with my colleague and say, let's table the vote for this week, and then you all will have an opportunity to get as much of it done as you can. We would do the first reading next week. And then that way, if there's additional edits that the council is concerned about or questions that we would like to raise, then we would do the second, second reading vote, the second vote modifying based on that.
And Mayor, I'd just make a point of order concerning my motion, in that I would like the table itself, just because of the fact that, you know, we should start with some numbers that make sense before we start talking about this. So I would, I would hold to the proposed table.
Okay.
Madam Mayor-
I defer to the city manager.
So, so that I'm clear, so what we're going to try to do is take similar and make sure that the numbers lay this out for the cumulative for what you requested, and then also make sure, go back and check, because you stated the subtotals were off in here, and so we'll go back through and make sure that all the numbers are accurate. Was there, was there a third item?
Yep, so the other item, so there's a few, so you're correct, the cumulative table confirming all of the totals. There's still the question outstanding regarding pay differentials and the impacts of costs associated with them, that, and whether or not that needs to be accounted for in this budget amendment. Okay.
Yeah.
And we also have the tree, the tree matter that would need to be reflected as well.
And then I was just talking, not necessarily just about the numbers and having them organized so that we could see them, but just structurally, if it exists and it's all in one place, and those numbers relate to whatever the bigger presentation thing is that you bring in and all of those other things, I'll just feel better. And that's, like, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
If, if I can, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Small, so what you're asking is, is what you asked staff about finding the information on the website, which I think the mayor alluded to earlier. So we'll, we'll work with the team to make sure that the website is, gets updated. We're going through a revamp right now, so.
Oh, no, no. I get it. Like, and I'm not hating, and I certainly am not accusing you guys of anything because I couldn't find it. I'm just saying that I actually looked, because I was, like, I was excited after I thought I had come clear after the last meeting. And then when I tried to find it after I talked to staff, and they're like, well, it's on the website, I couldn't necessarily find it. And that's all I'm trying to say. And so my thought would be, if all of the numbers and adjustments are cumulatively added to one single document, it can still make sense with regard to the changes that you need to make, but it will also keep people relatively current on where we are. And that's what I was hoping would happen with the, with the ordinance, the proposed ordinance adjustment, like the actual document. So that's what I am talking about, is the, the hard document of what it is that we choose to vote on. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And with that, I apologize, Mayor. We would do our best to make sure that we, we address these items for next week.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because we still have a motion on the floor. So the city, the city staff, as, as we've just discussed, said that they can get the revised cumulative table included in the budget amendment, address the pay differential calculation that we need to be included, correct the totals that are-
Can I, point of order that possibly, and say that I am comfortable making, contingently tabling this particular item if we could have all this by Friday to look at? Like, if you say you can do it, like, if you can do it by Friday, then I would let you, like, I would let that walk. But, but technically, if it's going to take, like, Monday or Tuesday, I'd rather we just table it.
Councilmember Gibson?
I was going to say the same thing. I'd like to be able to see it and digest it before I would vote on it. So it sounds like we ought to, whether the word is table for another week, something to postpone so that we do have a chance to look at the document and digest it before we come here and, and vote on it.
Okay.
And again, I'd just like to say, it's not me saying anything about staff or math or anything like that. It's just, it would, I would feel better giving my thumbs up or thumbs down on the people's money if it was like this. And so that's what I would request.
Okay. So question for the city manager, can, can these edits be made by Friday?
Mayor and council, we can do our best to meet your request to have these items addressed by Friday.
All right. We'll try our best. It's different from we can do it. All right. So let's, let's go ahead and move forward with the, the motion that's on the floor. So I want to make sure that, and if it's okay with Councilmember Small.
Stay, you did a good job last night.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to delay the first reading vote of the FY '23 budget amendment number five by one week to allow city staff time to make the following adjustments to the budget amendment. First, adding a cumulative table that summarizes the impact of budget amendments one through five on the FY '23 budget. Two, to address the pay differential added cost associated with acting supervisory, newly acting supervisory positions that were included and, that occurred during this period. Three, to address the transfer of tree fund-related costs. So I always mess that up, Councilmember DeBala, I apologize.
I'm sorry, what?
The, the moving of the money for the trees.
The fund.
Oh, to put it in here?
Yeah. To put that in there. And then four, to correct and verify the grand totals of this budget amendment for all of the tables that are included in the budget amendment. Okay?
The website was also included.
Yes, as well. Thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson. As well as posting all of the FY '23 budget amendments on the budget webpage on the city website.
Yes, I would, I would associate with myself with your restatement.
Okay, thank you. All right. So all those in favor of delaying the first vote of this budget amendment by a week to allow for these modifications to be made, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? All right. Thank you so much. So we will, Madam Clerk, if we can, make sure that for the, the agenda for next Wednesday would show the first reading ordinance. Now, thank you. All right. So now, yes, thank you all. So now, we need to vote to convene as the Stormwater Board. Would someone like to move?
I'm going to take a five-minute break before we convene.
And did everybody get their budget questions in?
I have no more lights. Okay. So let's do a five-minute break to, to allow everybody to stretch their legs a little bit, and we will reconvene in, I know us, at 9:20.
So what is this?
Okay? Yes, as well, thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson. As well as posting all of the FY23 budget amendments on the budget webpage on the city website.
Yes, I would associate it with myself with your restatement.
Thank you. All right, so, all those in favor of delaying the first vote of this budget amendment by a week to allow for these modifications to be made, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, thank you so much. So, we will, Madam Clerk, if we can, make sure that for the agenda for next Wednesday would show the first reading ordinance. Now, thank you. All right, so now... Yes, thank you all. So, now, we need to vote to convene as the Stormwater Board. Would someone like to move?
We'll take a five-minute break before we convene.
And did everybody get their budget questions in?
I have no more lights. Okay, so, let's do a five-minute break to allow everybody to stretch their legs a little bit, and we will reconvene in, I know us, at 9:20.
So, what is this?
I always say five, I know everyone needs ten, but this way we can make sure everybody's back. All right, so, after taking a look, I know that our next agenda item is to discuss the stormwater budget, but given the feedback that was provided on the prior budget amendment, it's applicable to the stormwater budget amendment as well, and therefore, we are going to treat the stormwater budget amendment in the same fashion as we've just voted on the budget amendment number five. So, with that, we're going to move forward with a presentation which will provide us with a stormwater management program overview. I'll turn things over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. This evening, we'll have Director Braifway, who's going to walk you through the stormwater and provide a great presentation on our stormwater management program. Director Braifway?
Good evening and thank you. I know you're all probably brain-dead as much as I. I'll try to keep this brief, but I do want to say that the city has a very substantial stormwater management program. So, if nothing else, I'm hoping to get across to you today, the history of the program, specific recent history. Tacoma Parks had ownership of the stormwater system for the past 35 years. Our regulatory requirements, so you understand what we must comply with for state and federal laws, recent projects, as well as our funding sources. So, if I can enlighten you on just those topics, I feel like we're further ahead. As I mentioned, the city inherited the stormwater system in 1988. Prior to that, it was managed by WSSC, and I use the term "managed" lightly. Their focus, of course, is water and sewer, not stormwater, so it meant that the system was neglected. However, they were the utility body that had responsibility. At that time, the state of Maryland ruled that the water and sewer utility could no longer manage the stormwater system, and in those cases where it did exist, they were required to shed that infrastructure. At that point in time, the city had a decision to make, whether to take it on itself or hand it to the county, ask the county to oversee the program for us. As you can imagine, the city had numerous hearings, meetings, lots of discussion, lots of input, lots of analysis, and in the end, decided to manage the system itself as a way to provide more direct benefit and to be able to ensure that city funding went directly into the city program itself, as opposed to sharing those funds with the county or getting a small amount of county maintenance for our system. When we inherited the system, that map I have there is what it looked like. We had giant sheets with hand-drawn lines of where the inlets and pipes were. Since that time, and again, we're talking 35 years ago, we've had the system entirely digitized. It's now on GIS, and as I'll explain in future slides, every inch of our system has been video-inspected and cleaned and documented, and so we know exactly our pipe size, what type, where, where the inlets are, where the outfalls are. Our system is quite old, as you can imagine, a city of our size. It's over 100 years old, and it's been expanded and improved over time. And, of course, the purpose of a stormwater system is to provide safe conveyance of stormwater, protect property, as well as streets and bridges, and to enhance water quality in our area. This is a map that shows our new updated database on GIS. All this is available. We have 19 miles of stormwater pipe in our system, 715 inlets, 78 outfalls, and 89 treatment facilities. And the map there shows the locations, the long lines, of course, are the pipes. The circles tend to be inlets, outfalls, or manholes. I wanted to speak briefly about why a utility fee. When the city first inherited the system, it paid for the maintenance at that time with general tax dollars, and that, again, was 1988. In the early-to-mid '90s, the city was approached by the Environmental Protection Agency, which was looking at utility fees and wanted to partner with the city to do a pilot program. The city agreed, and we had Greenhorn and Amera come to the city and help us through the process of evaluating the functionality of a utility fee for stormwater management funding. As I mentioned, prior to that, the funding came from general tax dollars. So, what that meant is, the stormwater system had to compete with every other city program or department. So, if you needed a new trash truck versus needed to install a stormwater pipe, those two things were on equal footing and had to joust for funding. So, one of the things that became very apparent is that to have a utility fee that is funded separate and outside of tax revenue means that you can have a dedicated and dependable source of funding that doesn't have the ups and downs of political posturing and other priorities and needs. So, it's a way to, you know, not have it affected by a change in tax rates. It also is a fair and equitable way of generating revenue, depending on how you have your fee structure set up. So, it means everybody pays into the system. One of the specific and significant things that the city evaluated at the time is, if you have a tax-based revenue stream, those tax-exempt properties don't contribute to that. And for a city like ours, that had a large college, a large hospital, several other nonprofit institutions, to know that those large property owners with quite a bit of impervious surface were not contributing anything to the management or maintenance of the structures itself. When you have a stormwater fee, it applies equally to everyone, tax-exempt, not tax-exempt, private or public. So, all property owners contribute. And lastly, it enables you to set your rate based on what your funding needs are. So, we've identified over time that the type of funding and the level of funding we need to do the level of management that we have. Should the council decide to add new programs or new policies, then we would identify the additional funding needed, and you could set that rate to generate the amount of funding needed to do whatever you wanted to do in the program. In 1996, we established that utility fee mechanism, and it remained unchanged, other than slight increases in the fee structure, for decades. It wasn't until 2020 that the city contracted with Black and Beach to do an update, a review of our impervious area, to take a look at what the average impervious area was, how it was distributed across property types, and to assist us with taking a look at alternative fee structures. One of the main findings was that our assumption about the average impervious area for single-family property was much larger than what we'd previously assumed, and that had a lot to do with type and quality of the data we were able to gather. Back in the late '80s, early '90s, it was tax records, it was square footage, it was whatever the county had on its tax bill was assumed to be your footprint of your building. Now, we have LiDAR, GIS, great many other ways to get planometric data so that we can have a much more specific understanding of impervious surface on a property. And one of the things we learned is that we had a much larger variation in impervious surface on our single-family properties than we would have otherwise assumed, a range as wide as under 500 square feet to over 10,500 square feet, all on single-family property types. We get the information of our impervious area from the county. They have, as I mentioned, a LiDAR analysis that they do every three years. We use that data set both for our tree canopy analysis, as well as our impervious area surface analysis, and all that information is available on the city's website, and we went through quite an effort of outreach to the public when we took a look at changing the fee structure. At that time, and many of you may have been the recipients of this, but we had numerous public meetings, we also did direct mail, and in fact, one direct mail piece told people specific to their property exactly what the new rate structure would mean for them and what the various types of impervious surface that were identified on their property. So, we reached out when the city decided to change that fee structure so there would be a clear understanding for why and what. Prior to that, all single-family properties were charged a flat fee. So, every single-family property, regardless of size, was charged a flat fee, but multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties were billed based on the amount of impervious surface. So, in 2022, the council decided to shift that so that all properties, regardless of single-family or commercial, would all be billed based on their impervious surface. We've always had a program to enable property owners to request a correction if they think there's something inaccurate about their bill system. That's always been in place. When we changed the fee structure, we made an effort to make sure people were aware of that ability to question the impervious calculation. In that initial change, we received requests from 45 property owners identifying what they thought were errors in their impervious structure. Of that 45, 14 actually were reduced in size, 12 were increased in size, which means they actually had more impervious surface than that county record show, and 19 had no change. So, we were very happy to work with residents to get their actual survey data, provide that to the county so our, the county impervious surface layer could be improved with each correction. We also do have a credit program, which was established for this current fiscal year. So, the credit program is a way that a property owner who has taken measures on their own property to reduce the amount of stormwater or to add treatment facilities can apply for a credit and have their utility fee reduced as a result. And that program was established by city code. There's a maximum credit available of up to 50% of a reduction of your utility fee, and there's multiple categories that you can be eligible for credit, including tree planting, rain gardens, bio-retention facilities, bioswales, dry wells, permeable surfaces, and green roofs. And all this information is available on our stormwater management page program, both the applications for corrections, the guidance documents for credits, and all kinds of information about the utility fee itself. I wanted to use this slide just to illustrate that broader range in impervious area over single-family properties. Again, you can see that it is quite a significant expanse, and in terms of comparing a flat fee structure to one that more reflects the actual impervious surface, we thought it did a disservice, and we felt that a fee structure based on actual impervious area was a more equitable way to distribute the cost of the program. I wanted to compare, and again, there's probably way too many details in this slide, but on the left-hand side, you see the single-family fee amounts. So, 41% of property owners pay $100 or less annually for their stormwater utility fee. An additional 45% pay between $125 and $175. So, 86% of our single-family property owners are paying between $0 to $175 a year. The amounts beyond that reduce fairly substantially, and you can see the highest fee that we have is a $500 fee, and there's actually one property that pays that fee. So, once you get into those larger, larger impervious areas, properties, there are fewer and fewer of them. Similar in the multifamily, commercial, and institutional properties, again, they've always been charged a fee based on their actual impervious area, but you can see the majority, 58%, almost 59% of property, those types of properties, pay between $100 and $500 annually for their stormwater fee. When you look at the top of the scale, that's $1,675, that's a single building that has charged that amount, and the $12,000, the next highest, there are two properties that are charged that amount. And that next layer, $5,000 to $8,000, there are eight properties charged that amount, same with the $3,000 to $5,000. So, I just offer that by way of comparison in terms of the rates. I wanted to show you a bit of what you'd see on the city's webpage and on the county's impervious area mapping. This map here shows the level of detail that's available for identifying impervious area. There are nine different categories of impervious area that are tracked by the county. The obvious ones, roads, sidewalks, buildings, there's also driveways, patios, street sidewalks, non-street sidewalks, courts, bridges, and other surfaces. So, each are color-coordinated, and you can identify your property and toggle on and off to see the various types of impervious area identified on lots. So, again, this is all available on the city's website. Wanted to just give a perspective on property types, as well as impervious area. By far, by number of properties, we have larger number of single-family properties than we do others. So, 86% by number of properties in the city are single-family, 14% are other-developed, 5% multifamily, 4% commercial, and 5% tax-exempt. If you compare by amount of impervious area, 54% of the impervious area cover is provided by single-family properties, and 46% by other-developed properties. It's just an interesting numbers game when you look at some of these numbers, so it's about split half and half, but by far, the largest number of property types is the single-family properties. Wanted to speak a bit about our funding and our budget. This is a reflection of the current FY23 stormwater management budget, and starting at the top, $734,000 in expenditures, we have about $761,000 projected for revenues. The vast majority of those are from the utility fee, though there's also permit fees from stormwater permit issuances that contribute to that revenue stream. In terms of the expenditures, there's three major categories, obviously personnel at $118,000. I wanted to stress that the personnel we have associated with our stormwater management program includes half of our city engineer and a quarter of our construction manager. So, there's less than one full-time equivalent staffing associated with our stormwater program. So, to say it's lean and mean is kind of an understatement. The next major source of expenditure are capital projects, and those differ from year to year. We usually spend about $200,000 to $250,000. We usually spend about $200,000 to $250,000 a year, and those are typically related to new facility construction, so where there hasn't been a system before to install a system. The project we've identified for this current fiscal year is the Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration, which is a project we've been trying to complete for many, many years. The next category is maintenance and services, and it breaks down into three types. There's repair and maintenance. Again, between $150,000 and $200,000 a year is spent on repair and maintenance, and that's specifically for repairing existing systems. So, the existing inlets, the pipes, the things that are already in the ground, making sure that they're working. So, that is specific to repairs. We also have required services that we have to perform for a regulatory requirement. And those include our water quality testing and our illicit discharge investigation. And as I mentioned before, we have quite a vigorous video inspection and pipe cleaning project. So, one-fifth of the system is video inspected and cleaned annually, which is a very important thing to do in order to maintain your system. But in addition to keeping the system cleaned and functioning at a high rate over time, it also provides the data that we use to then track repairs. So, when you have a video camera going through a pipe, you can identify where the structural faults are, where the failures are, so that can then feed back to your repair and maintenance. So, it helps us identify structural failures before they become catastrophic. We also pay for contract maintenance for our bio-retention and modular wetland facilities out of those services. In addition to our in-house maintenance staff, we have contractual contract services. And then, lastly, supplies. I did want to mention that in the FY23 budget, on the topic of budget amendments, we had an enormously large, very unusual budget amendment in the stormwater budget for this fiscal year. And that was as a result of, as you can see, several projects that were delayed. By far, the largest pot of money was related to our EV street sweeper. It took over a year from order to arrive, and that was a cost for which was split half into the stormwater fund and half into the equipment replacement reserve. So, because of that delay, funds that were allocated in one year were moved to the next so we could pay for it when it actually arrived. We also had a large stormwater project on Cockrell Avenue at Circle Woods. We partnered with Park and Planning, and we contributed $50,000 to the Hillwood Manor Stormwater Facility. And this additional $5,000 was to do the planting. We had a very, very good working relationship with Park and Planning, where we were able to provide a small portion of the stormwater facility budget for that. In exchange, we agreed to do the maintenance, and we can claim the credit for that, which I'll get into later, for our stormwater treatment credits. And then, lastly, delays in project for our outfall monitoring and our GIS update. So, we had a $657,000 budget amendment, which bumped our budget to 1.3. But it really, by and large, is that $734,000 on a regular basis. Those others expenditures were unique and were related to carryovers. On the subject of budgets and planning, you will see when we do the upcoming budget, we have a five-year capital improvement program budget. The purpose of this is to identify projects long-term. The council's really just focused on approving and reviewing the next year's budget, but we put out for everyone to know our planned future projects for stormwater, as well as other type of large projects, other type of large expenditures related to equipment and vehicles. So, this is just an example of our five-year CIP projects that we're planning and have identified and have on our list of important projects to do. This doesn't mean that this is written in ink. It can be changed based on priorities, other failures, higher needs. But these are the projects that we have already identified work that needs to be done, and this is associated with the capital budget. I also wanted to go briefly into the state and federal regulatory requirements. We don't run our stormwater management program just because it's a good thing to do environmentally and to protect property and protect roadways. We actually are required by state and federal law to operate the stormwater program in a certain way. For those of you may be familiar with something called NPDES, it's the National Pollution, Discharge, and Elimination System. And we're part of an MS4, which stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And we're a Phase 2 community. Phase 1 communities are county, Phase 2 are municipalities. So, we have specific regulatory requirements that we have to meet. We received our first stormwater permit in 2003. The city typically issues those for a five-year period, but we had that in place until 2018. It set requirements for six control measures. In 2018, we got our second permit, which requires those same six control measures I'll go into on the next slide, but also added a new requirement, which was impervious area restoration, which means that we have to develop treatment facilities that treat runoff from a minimum of 20% of the impervious surface or developed lands that don't currently have stormwater controls. So, we've spent quite a bit of time and effort and energy trying to design, identify, and build treatment facilities. Not to put too fine a point on it, but a treatment facility is vastly different from a conveyance system. So, there's two very important things that the stormwater management program has to provide. It has to provide conveyance, the inlets, the pipes, the outfalls, so that rainwater can get to the nearby creeks and streams without damaging property in the process. It also needs to provide a treatment ability, a way to reduce the pollutants. That's not a volume thing necessarily. It tries to get the most polluted level of rainwater, which is typically that first flush of rain after a storm. And the treatment facilities that we're building are to treat and reduce the pollution in that initial, most polluted water. So, our permit is for a five-year term. We expect it to be renewed in 2023. We have, as I mentioned, reporting requirements, both annually and biannually. All those reports can be found on the city's webpage. I won't go into this, but feel free to reference back to it. Each of these six control measures is what we need to accomplish in order to be in compliance with our permit requirements. Let me just see if there's some I wanted to... I wanted to point out just a couple of things on here. A couple of these measures, we do in concert with the county. So, we have a memorandum of understanding with the county, both for sediment and erosion control, as well as for illicit discharge investigation and enforcement for pollution. So, those two items, the illicit discharge and the construction site runoff, we have agreements with the county to provide the services. We work in partnership with them. We do our own investigation. We take information, and we do site visits. But should there be more formal action required, we turn that over to the county and state. The city manages its own stormwater permitting, separate from the county, and we do quite a bit of pollution prevention and housekeeping, as I've mentioned before. In terms of the impervious area restoration, this new requirement that was triggered for us in 2018, we knew this was coming. So, since 2006, we've been working on building these treatment facilities. And it's been an interesting learning curve, but we've been fairly successful, and you can see the results of which around the city. We have, as I mentioned, 89 treatment facilities. There are 66 bio-retention facilities, 13 modular wetland systems or filteras, six permeable pavement or infiltration basins, one green roof on this building, two wet ponds and a step pool. In addition to those treatment facilities, we've completed almost 800 feet of stream restoration over a total of four projects, and just under 300 feet of outfall stabilization over eight projects. And then, in addition, as I mentioned, we get treatment credit for our street sweeping program, our storm drain cleaning system, and our tree planting program. Every year, as I mentioned, we have to comply and provide a report. We need to treat a certain number of acres. Based on that 20% requirement set by the state, the number of equivalent acres of treatment the city needs to provide is 109. To date, we're treating 80. So, we're supposed to, by 2025, reach that 20% goal. So, we have a ways to go. If you had read our report two years ago, we thought we were much closer. As the program evolves, both our understanding of the formulas and the treatment credits has changed over time, and the state has also changed some of the way they track credits. For instance, we used to think we could take a street sweeping credit every year. So, the amount of street sweeping we did, we tracked the weight, we added it up, we run it through the formula, we get that credit. The state has now decided that it's for the course of your permit term. So, we have to add each year together and create an average, and then we can claim that once. So, as you can imagine, what we thought was a very significant credit turns out to be a much smaller one. So, we're all learning through the process, and I think in 2023, when our new permit starts getting worked on, we'll no doubt have a lot of workshops with the state to understand ways in which to improve both our credit profile, as well as understand better what they need. I wanted to show just some brief pictures of the type of facilities I'm talking about. When I talk about bio-retention, here's some in progress. One of the key components of a bio-retention facility is you're taking out the original soils. So, you're excavating something, you're making a big hole, you're making a big pit, and then you're filling it with special soils, which doesn't at all look like garden soil. It's a very different kind of soil that's very permeable, that's very granulated, and its sole purpose is to filter water and remove pollution. So, once you've dug it out, you put the special soils in, and then you plant it on top. Some of these facilities are connected to underdrains and stormwater pipes, so the water, once it's filtered and cleaned, can go into those pipes and then out into the nearby creek. In other places, it's not. It just is infiltrating directly into the ground and the water table. So, depending on the location and what kind of permeability you have in the soil and where your nearby infrastructure is, you can either have it directly piped or not. When I mention modular wetland systems, this is a type of facility that we've started to use more and more. One of the things we've learned over time is the bio-retention facilities are a little less expensive to construct, but far more expensive to maintain because they require significant maintenance. As anybody who does gardens or landscaping can tell you, it's not just removing leaves in the fall. It's every month, you really need to be there to maintain the vegetation. And at a certain point, your facility will clog with sediment and soil, and you need to remove it all and start all over again. That's what they're designed for. With a modular wetland system, far greater upfront cost, as you can see by all the concrete, it kind of looks like an inlet. However, it has cells within it that have those same kind of filtration soils and special media that takes water in, pressurizes it, pushes it through the filtration, and then connects it to the storm drain. So, we are tending to put these in. They have a little bit of smaller footprint, a little bit of less maintenance requirement. They do still require maintenance. You've got to keep the inlet openings clean. You have to test the soil to make sure it's still functioning properly. They do get clogged. So, it does require maintenance, but it's a little less than the garden style. As I mentioned, we did quite a bit of outfall stabilization and stream restoration. These two photos, one is from work that we did on Long Branch Creek, or near Long Branch Creek, Glen Side Drive, a significant stormwater management project that started as a sidewalk project. And then, there's an example of a stream restoration that we did in Circle Woods. And we do alternative measures as well. As I mentioned, tree planting, street sweeping, permeable pavers. One of the other things we do particularly related to traffic calming is if there's a way to incorporate a stormwater feature within a traffic calming measure. Sometimes there are, sometimes there aren't. This is an example at Kirkland and Kennewick, where we installed one of the first traffic circles. And this one was actually analyzed quite a bit for its effectiveness, both at stormwater treatment, as well as a traffic circle. We also coordinate volunteer efforts with scouts and others to identify inlets for no dumping. Lastly, we have a stormwater permitting function within the stormwater management office. Our city engineer reviews permits for construction. So, the city issues permits, stormwater permits, are required for any time you're disturbing more than 5,000 square feet if you're modifying an existing single-family structure. However, if you're doing any exterior work to commercial, industrial, or institutional property, you have to get a stormwater permit regardless of the size of the disturbance. So, the city issues these stormwater permits for those certain construction types. They are not issued by the county. If you're doing building in Tacoma Park, they are issued only by the city. The county does have a small land disturbance program that does do some stormwater management requirements for those projects that are not required to have a stormwater permit. But any stormwater permitting is done within the city directly, and we issue those specifically and provide that documentation to the county. There is a fee structure associated with the stormwater permits. These are all identified by code. There is treatment and engineering criteria that are associated with stormwater permits. We don't create them ourselves. These are all dictated and driven by the state. We use the Maryland Stormwater Design Manual, and we are required... Any of our programs and requirements have to be approved by the state. So, our permitting program, our evaluation program is all in compliance with the state and meets the state mandate for how you evaluate those types of treatment measures. And I will just briefly mention, I've often heard people complain that there are waivers given for stormwater. And I will say, the city has never issued a waiver of the stormwater management requirement. We have never had a case where the people met the threshold for a waiver. So, that is not something that the city does. I do understand that the county does, but it's not something that the city does. So, for properties within Tacoma Park, we're very rigorous in our review of their plans and their requirements. If you want to look into this in more depth, again, there's information on the city's webpage as to the manual, the requirements, and the permitting process. Briefly, there was two other things I wanted to talk about. One of the major stormwater management projects that the city's been associated with in the last few years has been the Flower Avenue-Green Street. It was unique for a number of reasons, one of which it was over a mile long and almost $7 million in cost. So, it was the largest and most expensive capital project the city had ever undertaken of its type. It took a long time, and any of you who were around back then may remember, we actually started, I say 2014, I was looking back, it was actually 2012. So, it took quite a while to come from a great idea to actual construction. And I raise it for a couple of things. One is that it was a way to combine many different facets and improvements into one project. It included traffic calming, sidewalk installation, crosswalk improvements, improvements to bus stops and transits. We added seven stormwater treatment facilities. We also partnered with WSSC, which is a first-ever project. There's a new water main, hydrants, and updated house connections. We totally transformed the street lighting, both on the Pepco poles, as well as adding pedestrian skylight lighting, and we planted trees. And that was associated with our project. In addition, Washington Gas also came in and upgraded their gas system prior to us starting the project. One of the unique aspects of this is, as we were in the development and design, we were able to collaborate with WSSC so that the much-needed, over-100-year-old water main was able to get replaced. Our design team did the water main design, and our contract included that work in the bid for construction. And so, we were able to manage that project. WSSC paid for their design portion, and they paid for their construction portion. But the real benefit for the city, and it saved us literally over $1 million, was that we shared costs on construction costs, mobilization, setup of, you know, all the sort of hard and soft costs associated with construction. So, we were able to reduce by half those costs to the city. It was a benefit to WSSC. They didn't have to pay full freight, and it was certainly a benefit to the city. As I mentioned, it was just under, it was $6,700,000. The funding that we got from others was almost $5,500,000, and the city expended $1,240,000. And the sources of the funding were set out below over $3 million for... And the sources of the funding were set out below, over $3 million from WSSC. The city was able to get a $1 million Transportation Alternatives Program grant. We got some initial funding from State Highway back when we were first talking about this idea. It would not have been possible had the city not had ownership of the entire right-of-way. So back then, the city owned the west side of the right-of-way, State Highway owned curb to curb the road, and Montgomery County owned curb to private property on the east side. So you had three jurisdictions managing a road, which meant nothing ever happened there because you had three different government agencies, all with competing demands. So we approached the state. The state was trying to shed its ownership of that roadway because it was no longer contiguous with other state roads that they had. It did connect to, but they had previously given Montgomery County the rest of Flower Avenue on up to Franklin. So they gave the city almost $700,000 in conjunction with that trade of right-of-way ownership. We used that for the design funding, so all the design costs associated with this project were paid for through the state. And then we also were able to use CDBG funds. Montgomery County contributed a small portion, and we also got our first National Fish and Wildlife Federation grant for some of the stormwater design measures associated with that. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention our stormwater resiliency study, which is a new project that we've currently got underway, and I'm really thankful and appreciative of those council members who have joined us on our site visits. I think it's been really helpful for all of us to kind of talk with residents, hear what they have to say, and walk around and kind of compare sites in terms of the impacts on private property. So the prior council had set up funding for this project in the prior fiscal year's budget. We evaluated, trying to figure out how best to incorporate a program and identified the Low Impact Development Center as a really innovative and novel organization that had worked with many of our sister jurisdictions around the area, and we really were very impressed by the work that they had done. So we approached them when we're able to share our county contract associated with getting them in the city to do the evaluation. As we presented to the council previously, they developed a proposal for us, which included four specific tasks or outcomes. The intention was for this project to last a year, so it started in the fall of last year and will fully go through to the spring. Of those four tasks, the first is they're going to develop a suite of stormwater management solutions that we can use to help educate residents, and we can have available for residents on our website and other places. So if they want to know, sort of, what can I do for this kind of problem in my yard, we'll have very cohesive and effective measures to recommend and for people to understand sort of what steps they can take. The second task, and what our site visits are all about, is we identified 20 locations in the city that were flood-prone, and those were locations that the city was aware of based on our past knowledge or past history, direct experience of flooding during rain events. So we provided that information to the Low Impact Development Team. They are now doing site visits, and they'll use GIS information, satellite imagery, field visits, information that they get from residents, and they're going to develop kind of recommendations for treatment and management measures in these locations we've identified. And then two of those 20, they're going to take a deeper dive in and develop a more detailed list of recommendations for the city to consider in terms of implementation to make improvements. The third task is they're going to give us a list of incentives and code changes that the city may want to consider, both for our own internal use as well as things to recommend or push for on the county level that could enhance stormwater management programs throughout the region. And then lastly, they're going to create a dashboard that'll be available on the city's website, where property owners will be able to access their property and use the algorithms to estimate the amount of runoff produced by various storms, and then what would happen if they did certain things on their property, so they could sort of compare and contrast what the most effective management might be based on their property size, the terrain, the amount of impervious surface. And then they'll also have some links to potential incentives and state grant programs. We'll be posting updates on the stormwater resiliency study on the city's website, so that is a live page that contains now the task list and proposal, the maps of the 20 sites they're visiting. We had one remote session so far, they'll be doing three others, so each one of those remote sessions will be accessible from that website. So that's something that we hope to have the next, the second public meeting on the stormwater resiliency study, once they're ready to give us the next round of deliverables. So with that, that's pretty much all I had planned on the overview.
Great. Thank you so much, Deputy Director of Public Works. It's 10 o'clock. All right, so I am losing my words. Councilmember Small.
Ray. Hi, and I just, I wanted to just be as direct as I can about this so I don't take up everybody's time. Again, you should do these kinds of things. I've been looking at the stormwater management plan, let's see, what's the date on this thing officially? The state document from, I believe, is 2010? Let me see, make sure. Yeah, April 15, 2010. Is that still in control of this overall scenario before I talk about it too much?
I'm not sure what you're referencing.
I am talking about Maryland Stormwater Management Guidelines for State and Federal Projects, April 15, 2010.
If it's, it could be considered the Maryland Manual, that might be, I think the last update might have been in 2009.
Okay, solid. So the reason why I'm asking about this is because of section four of that document, where it talks about what the structural aspects of design of runoff, and in particular, runoff towards wetlands and channels are. And it says a lot of stuff about the design manual and other stuff like that. I'm asking about this because I do understand that there's a great deal of work that goes to this part of the stormwater assessments. People where I live assert that there is less concern being paid to Sligo Creek runoff, at least over by where we live, and that substantive things about the street-grade drainage are not substantively consistent with best practices, at least as they understand them to be because of Riverdale Park. Now, that could just be because Riverdale Park is, like, had a bunch of flooding, and so they had to do a bunch of new stuff. But I've been, people have given me requests to take me places and show me different kinds of drains, people have showed me things when we had street parties about, you see this drain, see how they have to reach in here and do all this other stuff, there's all these other, like, so structurally, I have concerns about whether or not those things are fully in compliance with what they are supposed to be or if they're best practices. Now, I ask that because it's not ironic to me that one of the people who came to present today in open session, or one of the commentators, consistently thinks that the runoff associated with projects that we are doing as a town is inconsistent with what the design things are. And since we've got environmental people of some rapport here, but I'm just a lawyer, I'm looking at these documents, and they say what the things are supposed to do. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are consistent and up to the standard of design for street water runoff, in particular, in light of the number of hills that we have in our area and our proximity to Sligo Creek. I say this because it affects both the neighborhoods that are part of my jurisdiction, and people on both sides have complained to me. So that is all.
Thank you for raising that issue. I think there's a great number of ways to deal with that, but first and foremost, I would strongly encourage you to contact us if you do any of those site visits, because we can tell you exactly what's going on in an area. And I think it'll help explain and understand quite a bit about any particular situation. And we're always happy to get exposed to something we don't know, but certainly helpful to explain to people, because a lot of folks don't have the best sources of information, and they're going off of hearsay and limited understanding. So it's really helpful to get as many brains in the room to evaluate those kind of situations.
I just stayed with the part of that part, that because we live next to the creek, and friends of the creek are, a lot of those people are in the area, I've had a lot of substantive conversations about our stormwater runoff things, whether it be on the streets or the pathways that go down into the parks, or any number of things. And so, and because these people are experts, or they get paid to go do these things other places, I am comfortable with at least the fact that they think they know. And so I would like to be made clear that that is not the case. And since I used to do this, and I had people, like, I used to do this, we had designations, I would like to know. Thank you.
Well, and let me assure you, and I can, I can't say this in strong enough terms, the city exceeds state and federal requirements in any project we do, and to allege otherwise is highly offensive to both myself and the other professionals in my office.
Exactly. So I want you to know.
Yeah, well, and when you say you want to know, that's a very long and broad subject that we don't have time for this evening. And I can just point to a couple of things, one in which being that in terms of Glen Side Drive as an example, there were very minimal stormwater controls that were on that street when it was built in the '30s and '40s and '50s. And as a result, what you had was dead-end streets going right into the stream bed. The city spent over $1 million just two years ago putting in sidewalk and stormwater management features on that street that has totally improved the situation and reduced significant erosion and runoff, to the point at which the park and planning, which they own the land and they own that area, and it's their responsibility to manage and maintain, have been extremely happy with the result, and we've reduced quite a bit of erosion and pollution as a result of that. Part of the main program, in addition to protecting water quality, is also protecting properties. So in each neighborhood, in each area, there's different constraints and different concerns. And depending on when an area was developed, you have different infrastructure. As you could see by that map that I showed you with all our infrastructure, it's spread out through the city in various ways, primarily along stream valleys. But any work that the city does meets and exceeds all the requirements. In addition to those that are regulatory, they're also just far beyond best practice. One of the things that we've been glad to hear with our partnership with the Low Impact Development Center is they continue to reinforce how impressed they are with the work that the city has done in their few visits here on-site. So happy to have this conversation in a much broader and longer way, but...
And I'm not, I would like to be clear about this particular point, and that is that I am not saying that it is possible that everything that you're saying is untrue. What I am saying is that when I talk to people who say that they know things about these things, in particular, like when they point to Glen Side Drive, they quibble. And so I just want to know, and wanted the opportunity for you to be able to assert that everything is fine, so that people would know, just like when people get on and say things about budget stuff that isn't necessarily true from the residents, like, cool, but it's not necessarily accurate. So at least now we can do this about that, too, and hopefully put some of that to bed.
And Councilmember Small, I just will say that I, you know, while I was Ward Six Councilmember, I worked with Director Braithwaite and her team, and there's been a number of follow-up inspections of a number of the Ward Six newly-installed stormwater systems. Now, there are a couple that we know, I think, that bio retention, there's a couple bio-retention circles that, you know, required a little extra love along the way, but they have been inspected multiple times.
I believe.
Councilmember DeVal.
Yes, thank you. Well, going out on a day like today to, who was not hardship duty, it was really delightful to do this stormwater site visit, although I feel, I feel a site, I feel like a, I feel like a Ward Six site visit is coming around the bend, isn't it? And I had a couple questions. Thank you for the presentation. Going back to the beginning of the, this is sort of in the order of the presentation. You talked about stormwater fees, and if I recall, we, the first year, the fee, the upper end of the fee was not implemented. So this is the year?
Yes. FY '23. We had a council establish a cap at $275. So for the first year, FY '22, no one paid more than $275.
Right.
In fiscal year '23, the full implementation of $25 for every 500 square feet of impervious service went into effect.
Right, so I'm just reminding, reminding or suggesting that we send those folks letters to warn them, to remind them that their fee is going up. That's all.
It has already occurred.
Done.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good. So along those lines, we established the stormwater credit program, and I didn't hear, did we get a lot of applications?
We've had a total of seven applications so far.
Okay.
Three of which were complete and have gone through the process and received their credit, four of which were not. I have heard members of the community say that it's a, they think it would be a complicated and process.
It's a lot of work for not a lot of money.
It is, well, it is not a difficult application nor a difficult process to review. It can be done by a property owner, you do not need any technical assistance or professional guidance to do this, it's not taxes. It's a very simple, straightforward application. What you will need to provide is photographs and documentation of whatever measures you took. If you say you have a dry well, you need to show us where the dry well is, how deep it is, where's your observation well, what it's connected to. So basically, you have to provide information as any, anybody would expect. So for, we, we've, for those that have come in that have been complete, there have been three that were complete with all the documentation, and they've been approved.
So do you think that more outreach would get more applications, or do you think it's just not out there?
I don't know. I think part of it may be, again, our stormwater fee itself, as you saw, annually, most 86% of residents in the city are paying $175 or less.
Right.
So if you can get a maximum credit of 50% of your stormwater fee based on what you've done, you're going to save yourself $50, $25 a year. It's minimal. So I think for some folks, it's probably not worth the effort. When we developed the credit program, we followed the example of jurisdictions around us, and we called together the best of what we found in terms of the way they set their programs up. Again, we can't provide funding or rebates that we don't, we can't give people more money than they paid. If you're paying $175 a year for stormwater and you've done a treatment credit on your property, we can only credit you a portion of that, that fund back.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And so then my second question has to do with the work you've got for this year and the work you've got projected out. So how does the team make, figure out which projects go in which budget year? How do you identify the problem areas and lay it out over the five, 10 years to meet the permit requirements and meet the needs that you see? I know you've made some changes because of that big storm in '21. And then plus this year, you've got the work you were going to do this year, and then the work that's got moved in from last year. So are you able to get all of that? This two-part question. Are you able to get most of that or all of that done this year, or do you think you're going to have staff capacity problems?
It remains to be seen. Our major capital project this year was just Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration, and we're doing that in concert with our engineering consultant team in terms of state permits and the bidding... state permits and the, and the bidding process. One of the unique things about that location is it's property owned by Montgomery Parks.
Right.
It's not city-owned property. But we do have an MOU with the county where we are required to do the maintenance of the Tacoma Sligo Mill-Poplar Mill property. And that's a whole other universe of conversation about that particular property and, and maintenance agreement. But at any rate, so we have to follow through Parks's process. They have a list of eight vendors that we can use. So we're hoping to get that project kicked off and underway. I, I do, it was important for me to point out the limited staffing that we have within our stormwater program. We run an incredible program with very few staff positions. So we are of course reliant on engineering consultants and others and our own ability to juggle, juggle work. So in terms of your question about how we decide what to do first, next, or other, there's a criteria that we use primarily associated with, you know, risk and damage. Is it damaging property? Is it a catastrophic failure? Do we have a pipe that's going to collapse? It's going to eat somebody's driveway? You know, those kinds of things would, would push a project as soon as we're aware of it up to a higher level. If it's a project related to treatment, we try to make sure we're adding treatment projects as we go, year to year, to try to meet that 20% treatment credit. But in any given year, for instance, you mentioned the storm of 2020, we were inundated with reports of significant and serious failures of the stormwater system as a result of that heavy, heavy storm. And so we kind of jettisoned all the plan work and identified four new projects that we did to add capacity and provide protection for property in areas that experienced flooding. So there are some years where plans go out the window and we pivot to the higher priority, higher risk projects. But in a perfect world, we have these plans, we have projects identified and we just work our way through year by year based on funding. So, you know, we have an assumption about what a project's going to cost. And then when it's finally designed, we turn out that maybe our estimate was too high or our estimate was too low. And so again, we're, we're limited by our budget just like every, everyone else is. So we, we can move forward on projects based on funding level and based on, on design plans.
So the, the strategy, if you will, is to, is to focus on treatment additions to meet the 20% goal and to fix the old pipes essentially?
Right. And maintain our good housekeeping. You know, it's really critical to do the video inspection, pipe cleaning, street sweeping. All those things really have to be done. And you can ignore them, but it's gonna, it's gonna turn around to hurt you several years down the road. So we put quite a bit of effort on routine maintenance as well as regular maintenance and then new projects. So it's, you know, as, as I showed you on that budget page, we, we allocate a certain amount of funding, oops, now I just lost it, based on those criteria. So we're trying to get, I can't make it big enough, you know, basically $200, $250,000 capital, 150 to $200,000 repair and maintenance and 100 or so on those required services of video inspection, water quality testing and maintenance.
Yeah. And, and so I have a lot of other questions, but that's it, that's enough for tonight. I am looking forward to the stormwater resiliency study results and particularly in that third section in terms of what, what we can do.
Thank you.
Either at the local or state, or at this, at the county level in terms of regulation and lobbying for, for changes. I'm interested in how the changes in the state manual, for example, are, what that's going to suggest for us, for us to, on the permitting side, what we can do there. But, but we don't have that yet. So that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Counselmember Gibson?
Well, I also had the privilege of being at probably 15 of the 20 sites and it's been a learning experience. And as you said, the LIDC folks are, are very competent, really great in terms of willingness to listen to and learn from the residents who let them in their backyards and told them what they saw and their problems. And they also, they LIDC come in in terms of, of our public infrastructure that the city has done as, as being commendable compared to other jurisdictions. I guess I want to build off on Councilmember DeBala's point or question about the credit program and its size. We saw today many, many private properties which the city does not put money into, with the exception of this credit program and a little bit on Poplar Avenue. I know that you did that. That's where the need is at. We didn't mention, you didn't mention climate change. Climate change has changed the ballgame here. And that's what, and I'm sure you're feeling it. And people are spending thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars. The, what this Tacoma Stormwater Solutions Group did an informal survey and found, found that information out all, all around the community. So there is a need for technical assistance, incentives, education for private property. And I know that that's, you've mentioned incentives in here and that's something that we can, we can do. People are also very, very aware of Rainscape's program that the county offers, which is much more robust in terms of what it can provide in terms of conservation landscaping and the, and the like. So I just want us to move down, consider moving down that direction. I realize it's a council decision. And I do think that we can build off this really wonderful LIDC study and, and, and do a little bit more of a strategic plan in terms of the watershed that's both public and private property. But I was impressed with what I've seen in terms of our, our public infrastructure, but I also saw a lot of need in terms of private property. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. And I think we have had this conversation in this chamber year after year in terms of whether or not the city would establish a rebate program or a Rainscape's program. And the council has made that, not made the decision to move forward primarily for a few different reasons, and that may change over time, one of which is funding. So you have to identify the source of funding for that rebate program. Currently all our stormwater money comes from the fee, the utility fee. So if we were to create a new pot of money, I think I've showed you that the money that we currently generate, that $750,000 a year is well allocated to a long list of needs that the city does, both new needs as well as just maintenance work. So if we were going to have a rebate program, we would need to identify a new source of funding, which would be a higher fee if we kept within the utility fee structure. So that would mean that all private, private property owners or all property owners in the city would be contributing towards that rebate. So funding is an issue. Staff resources is an issue. In order to run a rebate program, you have to have staff available to meet with residents, to provide that kind of technical assistance, to make sure that they've, you know, put in what they said they put in and, and did it well. And then all the administrative time and costs associated with processing rebates. So there's a staff component. And then one of the more serious and sensitive components is there's also an equity component. And I think that's the, the nut that we really have to figure out how to crack. Because oftentimes, again, especially in counties program, it gives you up to $7,500. As you mentioned, Councilmember Gibson, people are spending $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 on a stormwater management measure in their property. So in order to make that investment, you have to have the funding available to do that. So typically those are people who are, have more resources available to do that type of work. And so if the city were to offer a rebate program, it would likely go to those folks that are better well off to do that type of work. And so it does raise a real issue of equity, particularly if you've got a citywide contribution, everybody's paying towards that rebate program, but only certain individuals that can afford to can take advantage of it. So that's, in addition to the funding and the staffing and the how would you manage it, there really is that equity piece that we've yet to, to see it done well in other areas.
Right. I would, I, I hear you and I understand all, all of those points. I would have to say that those that have come up with the $10,000, that's great. There's a lot of people that live in moderate income houses down at Hell's Bottom, they're not million dollar homes down there, that aren't doing it because they can't afford it. So I'd, I'd like to have a program that would, that's based, you know, that, on need in some, whether there's a income threshold or something like that. But there are people that are not able to help themselves, they may be at the bottom of the hill, that, that we, that we could offer them technical assistance, credit, and, I mean, at least we should, we should try and explore that. And so that's something that I, I will try and do my bit with the council to move in that direction. We start, we've started, I think with, with what the FI, the Low Impact Development Center is, is coming up with, with some educational tools. And that's a, that's a really positive first step.
And I do just want to pick up on Councilmember Gibson's point. I think, and this was not covered in, from the perspective of the stormwater management budget, but we did learn a lot through the ARPA funds that we had assigned for things like multifamily rehab, energy efficiency. We've learned that there are a number of instances where those added resources actually helped to, I know for some of my multifamily builders, like they were applying to try to get massive stormwater related projects funded because they were multiple millions of dollars. And so I do think it's important for us, as Director Braithwaite has mentioned, is to, I know people are familiar with a rebate because the rebate is what the county offers. And so in order to do the rebate, you have to pay and then get reimbursed, right? But we've seen in our city where there are other opportunities where maybe we make grant resources, if those funds are available, to those individuals or organizations that are trying to make some of these types of massive upgrades that are needed to their property. I think that that's also something to keep in mind as well. Because again, we ran out of money really quickly with the, with the, some of the multifamily rehab and the energy efficiency work. And, and so it's not just necessarily grading. Sometimes it requires property level improvements in order to keep water out of, out of someone's home. And Director Braithwaite, if I'm remembering correctly, did we have some, I know the energy efficiency piece, was that, did that also include aspects of stormwater projects and the like?
No, specifically electrification and energy reduction.
Okay. But for the rehab component, they could make a justification if they needed to do that?
Yeah, I think there certainly could have been issues related to roof flooding, water intrusion, those kinds of things that could have been covered in, in those funds.
Okay.
Uh, Counselmember Hanzak?
Hi, Director Braithwaite. I also really appreciated being able to walk out with you in the LIDC group. So I have, I guess I have a number of questions and I won't ask them all. I'm just going to focus on a couple of big ones. I guess, one is, I, I wonder if you could speak a little bit more to the issue of, to what degree we are getting transfers of, of tax-based resources from the county level for stormwater. I, while I was on the campaign trail, I, you know, was just sort of running right and left, trying to learn about every issue you can imagine. Stormwater was very much on my radar and I ended up speaking to the highest level person, I think, and his name is, is not in my mind right now, but who works for the county and they, they're in the middle of doing this massive stormwater planning. I even got, I got a lot of flack coming at me because at one point I said, I spoke to this director at the county level, he gave me the time of day to talk to me for an hour on the phone. And he says, we, our city is included in their mapping plans and I geo-located all of our stormwater issues. And, and someone snapped back, you know, well, why didn't you call Daryl? And I said, well, because this is just what I was told. I, I would love to hear from Director Braithwaite what we're doing. But what I, what I'm asking here is, is, you know, it's a bigger, a bigger question in my mind, getting to, to what, a Councilmember Gibson is saying, you know, climate change is real. We're talking about massive dollars. Our stormwater fees, as you said yourself today, they're not going to come anywhere near the level probably that we're going to need as a city over the next 10, 20 years to help deal with the sort of massive changes induced by climate change. And we have a very aging infrastructure. So, so on two fronts, I guess, can you, can you speak to what kinds of transfers we're already getting and/or technical support or that you would like to see us taking advantage of and what we as a council could do for that? And again, this could be a conversation starter.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure I'm really understanding. We get no transfer of funds.
Nothing.
No, nothing from the county. We're entirely and solely separate. Now, that being said, they do have a large stormwater management flood, flood mitigation process. And we certainly communicate with them. We gave them our updated GIS. So they have, if they've posted it, last I looked, they still didn't post it. They had our old GIS. But we have given them our data. It's kind of a similar thing to where you look at the county's pedestrian safety and crash count stuff. There's a level of overview, analysis and data gathering that the county did, does. It's not ever going to be as fine-grained as we can get on our local municipal level because we just know the details more. That being said, they're trying to look at a, at a full scope. And if you, all you have to do is look at a map, Tacoma Park is at the bottom of Montgomery County, both geographically as well as topographically. So water is coming down to us. So we could have a Herculean program and we would never in and of ourselves be able to manage because it's coming from outside DC, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, into, into our city. That being said, I'm not aware of any specific funding or technical transfer that's available. We are not required to, I don't even think the county needs, because we have our own NPDES permit, the county doesn't need to get our data. They're making their annual reports. So I don't think there's a whole lot of information sharing on, on that level in terms of regulatory compliance and, and things like that.
So I'm just going to say what I hear, which is, it sounds like we could do a lot to help advance the transfer of information if we, if we supported you and your department in trying to figure that out. Again, I, I perceived from this director that he said, well, I don't see why we couldn't make big grants within Tacoma Park. We've got a lot of money coming in. We're applying for big grants. Now, he would seem strange to me. He wouldn't be in the know as he's governing a lot of this. But, I mean, we're talking about a lot, millions and millions of dollars is what he was quoting me. So anyway, sounded compelling to me.
It would definitely be good to have, good to have that relationship and that connection. One of the things we were discussing today is with studies like the LIDC study, we'll, we'll have the beginning, the acorn size of a potential project that we can then develop for, for grant funding. Again, we've worked within our budget and our identified needs. So we are able to manage the scope of project that we have. If we're going to scale up, we obviously need more staff, far more staff.
Right.
To, to manage a program that, that is any greater than what we've got in front of us. So it would be, you know, good to have, just like with some of the energy efficiency and electrification work, you know, we sit in on the county's energy efficiency meetings. We share that information. We could do the same for stormwater. I think in terms of funding, I would be quite surprised if, you know, given our history with tax duplication and other sources of funding, I would be very surprised if we get a dime from the county because, you know, they have needs far greater than their funding too. So.
They do, but we pay taxes to the county and we're not getting any of that on stormwater because it's going into the general fund, right?
No, we don't pay stormwater fees to the county.
No, we don't pay storm, but we pay our taxes that are going to other properties across the county and being used for their stormwater needs, I presume.
Well, they have their own stormwater fee structure similar to the cities.
On top of, so we're just not getting, we're not getting levy that?
Right. Montgomery County residents outside the city have their own stormwater fee structure. It goes into a dedicated stormwater fund. They may use additional general tax revenues in addition to that. I don't know how their budget operates. I just know that we don't pay, city residents don't pay into Montgomery County Stormwater Fund and vice versa. They have a different fee structure than we do.
I see.
So our taxes are not going into their stormwater projects.
Okay. Well, that, that's good to know. It would be good, it would be interesting to know if there is funding coming from the general fund on top of their stormwater fees, if, if we can figure that out at some point. So then that just gets to sort of the second layer of what I want to ask you about. As we're going into budget season, I mean, it was very profound to me when you said half of an FTE. half of an FTE of our city engineer is going, is coming from the stormwater fund and being used for stormwater management. That would explain to me, you know, the potential, you know, it's amazing what we have done, incredible what we've been able to do, but we, I'm going to just put this out there, I would like to see us as a city figuring out how we can utilize better maybe some of the resources that we have so we don't have to necessarily tap into this stormwater fund, such as the Stormwater Resource Group that we have, finding out how many different pathways we have to that group and how we can tap that. But also maybe considering for future budgeting, what we might be able to facilitate as a council on ensuring that you really have the kind of capacity that I can only imagine would be needed to manage all of these processes and hopefully a very large and growing fund eventually. And maybe even from other, you know, resources like the county and the federal level. Anyway, I'll leave it at that for now.
Yes. We had, you know, ARPA was another pot of money that we applied, not, and I'm saying applied. I had a number of projects that could have been ARPA-funded. There were a lot of competing demands. The city ultimately didn't fund any stormwater projects with ARPA dollars because there were higher priorities that were allocated for those funds. So it is, it is always a balancing act.
Thank you so much, Director Braithwaite. I mean, I think picking up on that last point, I think too, we, you know, the prior council was also thinking about the infrastructure bill and future resources that may be available through that bill, not just, you know, to us, but also to residents and the potential for there to be different types of tax rebates and things to make some of these improvements that are necessary in their homes. And I think the main challenge though, and I don't know if you're hearing much that's different, is, you know, whereas ARPA, the municipalities were really carved out and so we were able to kind of know that we were going to get our piece of the pie. I'm not quite hearing the same in terms of aspects of the infrastructure bill. And so that will require, although there may be resources that start to come out, it may require applications for more grants. And I don't know if you're hearing anything different.
No, that's, that has been my assumption of late, that most of the programs are going to be grant-funded. They're going to be very competitive and you're going to have to have a fully-designed project in order to apply. Also, many of the funds are coming through the county, which, similar to our program Open Space, we're getting in line behind the county, which is in line ahead of us. So it potentially could be a challenge, but I am sure that there are ways to craft and develop a project and a program that can fit the niche of various funding sources.
And I think too, you know, for my colleagues, like as we are, as we are starting to see bills perhaps that come through Annapolis and as we are starting to engage from the perspective of MML and county, county council and get a little bit more familiar with all of the things that are happening, as these opportunities come up to advocate for the inclusion, the explicit inclusion of resources for municipalities to deal with stormwater issues, that's going to be the challenge, particularly with this session in Annapolis, to really try to identify those, those points and to really make sure that the municipalities are carved out and explicitly stated. Otherwise, it will likely be the case that we will have to apply for grants and try to ask the county for resources. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah. Daryl, or Director Braithwaite, do you have the grant-writing staff to go after these projects?
There is no grant writing.
Okay, so then, so we're not going to get the money unless we have someone that can write the grants? All right.
Well, we have had had a fairly, a fairly exemplary track record with grants, though, you know, for instance, a million dollars for the Transportation Alternative Program, largely because it was a Green Street project with Flower Avenue. We had a dedicated staff person, a special project coordinator that went after that like a, you know, like an arrow. And so, you know, it's, it's at the cost of something else, right? We have to use existing staff resources to go after those grant programs and it takes enormous amounts of times, which means other stuff doesn't get done while you focused a staff person on that project.
Right. I'm not one that's particularly in favor of more FTEs for the city, but this kind of person, maybe whether contracted or otherwise, can leverage more than their, more than their salary.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. We've definitely had that experience. I understand HCD has hired a grant coordinator. I don't know if it's full-time or part-time, but we're looking forward to them being on board and they are hopefully right out of the gate doing a CDBG grant project for a Domer Avenue sidewalk construction. So hopefully we'll be able to leverage that resources for mutually beneficial projects between the departments.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, not seeing any other lights. Thank you so much, Director Braithwaite. We really appreciate all of the hard work that you have put in and all that you've done for the community and look forward to continuing to work with you as we try to tackle the challenges of stormwater management in our city.
Yes. I think I'm up for the next item too, unless...
Yes, the roof. Excellent. Yes. So next and our final item is a work session on a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for roof replacement at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Can I, okay, I'll turn things over to the city manager.
Director Braithwaite will take his side.
Sure, sure. And I just would like to jump right in on the elephant question in the room. Why replace the roof of a building that's going to get torn down? And I guess a part of the answer to that question is how optimistic are you? I have been working for quite a while. One of the reasons this is delayed, it was an ARPA-funded item that we jumped on right at the start of the fiscal year and tried to work with a number of different roofing companies for that very same thing. We have severe leaks in the building now. The roof is totally shot. It's been patched and repatched and it is gone. It should have been replaced years ago. It was, you know, we've been planning this redevelopment of the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center for years, so it kind of got put on the side and it's just, you know, we've been keeping the building limping along while we wait for the next phase of the program. We can't wait any longer. We've got leaks on the basketball floor. We don't want to ruin the building any further. So it was with great trepidation that we decided we have to bite the bullet and replace this roof. Our first round of visits, site visits, roofing contractors, I was trying to get the cheapest roof I could, since you could no longer patch it because it isn't substantial quality to patch. Give me a 10-year warranty, half the thickness mill roof, and the pricing we were getting back was almost the same as a higher-quality roof. And most roofing contractors said, "We just don't do roofs of that type." Nobody's asking for a half-quality, half-life roof, so product availability is low. And so I just kept getting more and more quotes to try to figure out what the, what the answer was here. So the recommendation I've made is to go ahead with the lowest-priced bidder that we got through our process. We got more quotes than those that are shown on the sheet. I didn't include those that were higher that were of a lower quality because it just didn't make sense anymore. So we've got an $84,000 quote, which was the lowest bid. We've checked the references, the company, the information we've got has been positive. Even in the best-case scenario, that building's going to remain as it is. If we were to get a proposal from a company contractor out of the bid next week, if Ira comes before you and says, "We've got the answer here," how many years do you think it is before that building would actually get demoed? You'd go through design development, which would be years, permitting, which could be almost a year, and then your contract negotiation and before you actually started construction. So, I mean, I, that's a reason why I'm not a planner, because I find it depressing that things go as slowly as they do. That's why I like to dig up things and put pipe in the ground because you can do it. You know, you can see your progress. But I, basically, we can't wait any longer for the roof. We have searched high and low and gotten the best pricing we can. I would love to have not been able to spend the money, not for that, or the HVAC system that we're going to have to replace because the compressor has now died and we won't have air conditioning in the spring and summer. So unfortunately, we have to put money into that building. When the city inherited from the county, we knew we were going to have to put money into that building. So this isn't a surprise. We delayed it and probably, you know, our mistake, we should have just jumped into it sooner rather than kind of the wishful thinking that we were doing that we would be further along by now in terms of the site redevelopment. But we are where we are. So, you know, that's the, that's the proposal we have in front of you. I don't take it lightly that it's replacing a building on, replacing a roof on a building that is supposed to be demolished, but I think we're many years away from that.
Yep. And just to kind of provide my colleagues with a little bit of history of, so when I came on council back in 2017, one of my biggest things was, "I want a rec center. I want a rec center." And we had to go through, first we had to own the rec center.
Yeah.
That was a process. Then we had a pandemic, which we're still kind of one foot in, one foot out. That delayed things because we were actually kind of getting some traction in terms of the ultimate development. And now here we are. We're at this place where we knew, I would say, one of the first meetings we had back in 2017 was, or I had with you all about the rec center, was about the fact that it was on its last leg. We had ADA issues, we had the roof issues, we had the HVAC issues. We knew that was an issue and it was always a debate. Do you fix it now, knowing that you want to replace it? Or do you try to hold out until the replacement happens? And we realized with the ARPA funds, we knew we couldn't wait anymore, which is why we put funds in the coffers, using the ARPA dollars to try to at least put a patch job on the building so that it would be usable because we knew that we were going to have to deal with the building for a few more years. So wishful thinking a few more, you know? We've seen with a few other projects, a few years can turn into six, seven, 10. But I'm going to be optimistic and speak life. Councilmember Fulcher.
I just want to start off by saying that I care a lot about the recreation center. I am in favor of what you're proposing and I also agree that we are not very close to doing the recreation center. The fact that we have like two responses to our request for proposal is not great. And so like, you know, we're very far from doing anything about it. But I find the environmental impact of action statement to be problematic because I don't think it'll be 20 years for us to replace the roof. I think that'll be something, you know, shorter than 20 years. And so I don't think that, that that statement really fits in with the environmental truth of what's going to happen with this building. Is there any sort of, I'm under the understanding that, like with the library, that our plan was to pass that roof on to someone else? Is that, is that the right building that we were doing that with? There was some, some building where we were using materials. Is there any plan for reusing this roof somewhere else? Okay.
No, it's a heat-down vinyl. It can't, it can't be removed and replaced.
Okay. So I would, I would ask some sort of change in the environmental impact statement.
We could certainly take a look at, I think it's a single reading ordinance, so I think it's just in front of you this evening. If we wanted to craft a change and Jessica put it in, otherwise...
Maybe we just strike that from it? I mean...
Yeah, no. So this is, this is a single reading ordinance, but this is a work session. We're not voting on it right now.
Oh, gotcha, right.
So it'll be on the agenda next week for the council to vote. So there's an opportunity to take a look at the environmental impact statement and make modifications. Councilmember Hanzak?
I also really support making sure that the recreation center is viable. I'll be honest, I'm one of those middle to low, middle, middle-income, I'll call myself a middle-income homeowner. I'm married to a man who is from the Czech Republic where we fix everything that is broken. I, and he gets up on the roof and does it himself and I understand the city can't do that, but this pains me deeply. I'm sure it pains you as well. I'm not, not, I'm not considering that it wouldn't pain you, but we are not the people that go and replace the whole roof when there's a problem. So I guess my first question for you is, and again, I'm not an expert on roofing, but we did just recently get a new flat roof and I got my own bids. I did all the bidding myself. Why are we going with TPO when isn't the EPDM, isn't it cheaper?
These were the pricings that we got from the roof companies. I didn't get any of the other type in any of that complication.
Is there a reason, just because it was recommended by the county or...
Recommended by the contractors.
Okay, but, so it is my understanding that the other type of flat roofing is cheaper. I don't know if there's an environmental reason not to get that, but that might be something to look at.
Yeah, it was not...
Or at least to come back and let us, I mean, they may not, they're not going to offer it because if it's cheaper, they won't make as much money. I think we'd have to ask for it. And I know, you know what you're doing, but I just, I, I'm just suggesting that since you two want to push this to the rock-bottom pricing but still get something that works for at least five years, that might be something to look at. Is there anybody who knows otherwise?
We could, I don't know kind of what to do with that. We request proposals from the companies that come and they make their best recommendation knowing that it's a competitive process, so I don't think that they would provide a price for us that was not the lowest price they could. But that being said, again, I'm not a, I'm not a roofer. I'm a bureaucrat, so we could certainly reach out. I don't know, I don't have any information on the type.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if the county, I'm assuming the county would make, maybe you misspoke too, I don't know, but if you said the county was recommending the TPO roofing, that would likely be because they wanted it to last. I thought, I thought I understood you to say that, but maybe I misunderstood.
No, the county's not involved in the project.
No, no, oh, I thought you just said that that was the type of roofing they generally recommend.
The contractors.
Oh, the contractors, okay. Yeah, I, again, I'm thinking, you know, around here especially, I find that most of the contractors I run into are always looking for higher standard, higher everything. So it might be something that we have to say, "Look, we're willing to go with the cheap as long as it functions."
That was the way we started, our interactions with contractors. I told them I did not want a high-quality roof because the building, I said, "Give me five to 10 years." And, and this was what I was getting at.
Still, that was their rock bottom. Okay. Yeah, so sorry to be pushy on that, Daryl, and I'm not questioning your values or your ability to do that. I just, that's my angle.
But I do want to just really quickly interject. So Director Braithwaite, so was this request for bid, was this submitted as a contract, like a more formalized request for bid?
No, we didn't have a written specification.
Okay.
We have, you know, we don't have the technical capacity to develop a specific specification and criteria. So we get proposals from various roofing contractors and compare and contrast and see what the differences are amongst them.
Okay, okay. So it's not, it's not like a typical contract, request for proposal bids and then it comes in? It's more...
Yes. It's just a request for proposals in that we need a roof, here's the subset. They all went up on the roof, they all cut into the roof, they all saw the failed insulation.
But I can understand that this was just given to selected vendors that you, that you sent the request for?
I probably called 35 roofing companies and probably got eight responses.
Okay. And so, okay, so this is a little different than I would have thought. I would have thought there was like a, put out a proposal for bid and then we would get the proposals that way and then make a pick, but this is just a straight procurement.
Right. For some things, we can if we have the technical capacity to write the scope of, scope of work.
Yeah.
In cases where we don't have the technical expertise, we go with a, you know, comparison of contractors and a basic scope of work.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's helpful. And so, and just to make sure that I'm fully grasping, were there, of those contractors that submitted a bid, did any of them naturally just offer a lower-tier product?
We asked for a lower-tier product.
And they didn't? Okay.
Some did give a 10-year warranty-type product. I'd have to look back to the quotes to see what that, what the membrane itself was. I don't know.
Okay. And just really quickly, because I think it's important, I know that I make a lot of comparisons to my house... And just really quickly, because I, I think it's important, I know that I make a lot of comparisons to my house, but I do know that roofing is often very different depending on the type of property and the usage and all of that good stuff. So, for this particular, this would require a commercial-grade roof, correct? Yep, okay. I'm so sorry, Councilmember Honza, were you, were you done with your question?
No, I'm just trying to explore, as, as the kind of resident that we heard from here, I, I feel very similarly and I'm, I'm pained to see us doing this. I know everybody, I'm not, I'm not acknowledging that everyone isn't. I just trying to think what we might not have thought of as a city. And I, you know, I, I'll just give you an example. I had, I also had about eight roofers come to my house. And I was a bit shocked at the phenomenal variation in what I got back.
Sure, you can see that in the prices.
From like 50,000, 50,000 down to eight. So, I, I, you know, it just, I think us being a city, we're very likely to get plenty of people who say, "They're loaded. It's Tacoma Park, Maryland." And just to, you know, to sort of push them on, "This is the product we want. We're willing to go with this." It may not sound believable because we're a city, that we would go with some. And, and I'm not saying we short-shift our population on the quality of a roof, but we are going to tear it down. So, even, even the HVAC unit, I would imagine we could move possibly to our new building, perhaps. I would like to see us do that if that's possible. But for the roof, you know, it's literally going to get destroyed. So, as long as we can keep people safe and keep the roof over their head, you know, this should be the closest thing to a patch job that we can do to save money for the city, I, I guess. But anyway, I, I'm satisfied, so thank you.
We only want to do it once. We don't know kind of the length of time we're going to be living with our decision with. We certainly have a problem there now. Besides which, particularly when we don't have the technical expertise to develop a specification, we're holding the contractor liable for the quality of their work. So, when we get their pricing proposal, it specifies their product. That's what we're holding them responsible for. Once we start inserting ourselves with types and quality and specifications, then we assume the responsibility for the, for the product selected. And in cases where we don't have the technical expertise, we have to rely on the contractors. The, these roofing companies are, many of them are companies that we've worked with before. So, we have a high degree of confidence in, in several of the bidders. And they do work for many of our sister cities, which is where I got some of the references from. I also tried to go local and as you can see, those tended to be the highest prices. So, we tried to, we tried to cast a broad net.
And so, I, I just want to say I'm in full support of us moving forward with this, with this contract. I know that we all think government works really, really quickly when it comes to development projects, but I just want to encourage everyone to kind of take a look at our track record and, and then ask yourself, "Are we really going to make sure that we have a, a, a new rec center in the next two years, right?" I'm going to push for it. I'm going to work really hard to try to make it happen. But just logistically, what we've seen is that just moving things forward takes time. And so, what we have to also prioritize is the quality of the rec center that we have that so many youth and so many adults in our community use day in and day out. And summer is coming and we need to make sure that it is a comfortable place for so many people in our community who are going to be taking advantage of the recreational services that we have. Councilmember Fulcher?
I just want to say, it seems like it was a, like, you know, it was a really good use of ARPA money considering who we know that recreation center serves. And so, like, yeah.
Yeah. All right, no more lights. All right, well, thank you all so much and I move to adjourn this meeting. All right, thanks so much. Everybody, have a good night.